Okay.
Whenever you're ready, Mark.
Okay, good afternoon. Welcome everyone. My name is Mark Kiefer. I'm the chairman and I'm calling, excuse me, calling to order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission Public Hearing at 5:03 PM on Thursday, September 18th, 2025. This is the September 2025 hearing of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, and I am joined by Commission Vice Chair Arian Allen, as well as Commissioners Finegold, Jackson, and Steele. So we have a full compliment today to that the Commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the subsequent amendments. We're conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing, AKA Zoom. As you may have heard, but if you just joined, the hearing is being recorded, so all further conversations between Commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. And at this point, we'd like to acknowledge any members of the media or elected officials who are present. I see Dan Murphy from the Beacon Hill Times. Hi, Dan, thanks for joining. Anyone else? Members of the media or elected officials? Let's see. I want to make sure I have the full view on here.
I see any mark.
Okay, don't see any. If you are here, please do raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you as well. Let's see. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. We do that during the adjudication of each individual application, and we will give you a heads up at the point in the discussion when we are ready to take public comment. If at that time you wish to be heard on the record, you will need to raise your hand in the Zoom like Dan Murphy just did in front of you saw, using the button, which is probably on the bottom of your Zoom panel. There may be a lot of people in the hearing, so make sure you do it using the button on your Zoom panel rather than just waving in front of your camera. And at that point, we'll acknowledge you and unmute you. And then sort of comments will be in the order in which people identify themselves and so forth. Again, we will give you the heads up when it's time to take public comment during each discussion of each application. Okay. And let's see, I think we're ready to begin. So the first item on the agenda, I believe, is the ratification of the August public hearing minutes. Did anyone have any revisions or edits or concerns about the minutes from the August meeting?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Finegold, please.
It's a small detail. The second item calls the vote three to one. That was the vote on the first item, but the second item was four zero. And the number should not be three, one, but four zero is a simple technical error, but I think that should reflect the accuracy of the vote.
Okay, let's see. Did you get that, Nick?
I did. Sorry. It was the, what was the application, Mo?
I don't, I don't see it in front of me. It's the second one. It's the one.
Girl Street?
It's no, the one after Charles Street. Charles Street, the Charles Street vote was three to one, because I voted no. It was, it was the one right after.
Oh, 97 Mount Vernon?
It shows the vote was four zip. The vote was four. There were no negative votes. The vote, but the numerical shows three to one.
Three to one, right.
Oh, right. Yes. Good catch. Most of this is 97 Mount Vernon.
Okay.
So you've tallied the people in the roll call correctly, four zero, but it should say four dash zero dash zero rather than three dash one dot zero.
Got it. Okay.
I just want to prove that I read the minutes.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Putting the blue M and Ms in the rider, if any of you get that reference. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Finegold. Anyone else? I will note also while we're at it, just again, another small typo, the adjournment time at the end under item six should read 7:04 PM.
Got it. Great.
Okay, so with that, I will move approval of a minute subject to the proviso that they include the revisions as previously articulated by Commissioner Finegold and myself with respect to the application of 97 Mount Vernon and the adjournment time.
Oh.
Okay, I do hear a second. Yes, that is a second. Sorry, thanks. We'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson. Our Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. The August minutes are approved with the revisions. Let's see, and we've got to approve the subcommittee meetings as well.
Yes, correct.
Okay, silly question. Since those of us who were not there, because we weren't on the subcommittee, do we vote or not?
You do. Well, yeah, we just need a quorum for vote, but you do vote.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you do. Yeah.
Okay, so we all have copies. Any revisions particularly for the subcommittee members to the draft minutes for the subcommittee minutes of the subcommittee meeting on July 14th?
No.
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve them?
I so vote.
You have a second? Okay, we'll vote on the approval of the subcommittee minutes from July 14th, 2025. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Subcommittee minutes are approved. So moving right along here. The next item is now design review, or do we have a okay? No 104 Chestnut, Nick?
We, the applicant withdrew last minute. We're doing some more research on the door. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the first item is 34 West Cedar Street. Kristen Kinsella is Kristen or someone representing 34 West Cedar Street present. I see Kristen.
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome. Thanks for coming. Do you want to give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Sure. So we live at 34 West Cedar Street. Our front door and entryway needs a refresh of paint after all the road construction that's been going on. We are planning on just repainting in kind of the Swiss coffee around the entry, the Dahlia, on the yellow Dahlia on the door, but wanted to take the opportunity to ask if we could make one change to the ceiling. And I do have a statement to read if that's okay. It's short.
Sure, please go ahead.
Thanks. To the members of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, we are kindly requesting approval of our application to the Commission to paint the ceiling of our front entry a soft, historically appropriate shade of light blue, specifically Benjamin Moore's wife blue from their historical collection, color collection. Our intention is to restore and preserve a design tradition that is both architecturally sympathetic and in keeping with the historic character of our home and our Beacon Hill neighborhood. The tradition of painting porch and entry ceilings light blue has deep roots in American architectural history, particularly in the 18th and 19th centuries. This custom, often referred to as haint blue in the Southern United States, was embraced not only for its aesthetic appeal, but also for its cultural and practical significance. It was believed to deter insects, ward off spirits, and visually extend the daylight sky, creating a welcoming and serene transition between exterior and interior spaces. Light blue porch entry ceilings can be found on numerous historic homes throughout the country, from Greek revival to Victorian styles, and their presence is widely considered a subtle yet meaningful architectural detail. The Lyman Estate in Waltham is one such local New England example of this tradition. A lovely example of this tradition in practice on Beacon Hill can be seen at 72 Chestnut Street. Far from a modern trend, the blue ceiling is a subtle yet meaningful architectural element that reinforces the historic context of a home. Rather than introducing something new, our proposal is a gentle restoration of historically accurate and well documented design feature. The selected shade is soft and muted, ensuring it blends seamlessly with the existing color palette of our home's facade while contributing to its overall historic character. Thank you very much for your time and thoughtful consideration. We're happy to answer any questions or provide further information, and we welcome any guidance that you may have. Our aim is to preserve and enhance the historic character of our home in a way that is both respectful and informed by architectural tradition.
Okay, thank you. And so just to quickly summarize here, the door and the surround, other than the ceiling of the surround, would be repainted the same color, obviously. But the ceiling would be the color shown on the right of the screen right now.
Yes.
I just want to confirm that because we may not know what Swiss coffee looks like.
Okay, sorry.
And but it does say repainting kind. So just to confirm for the Commission. Okay. Any other clarifying questions from the Commission as to what is proposed, just in terms of the specifics of what Kristen is requesting? Okay, so why don't we go ahead and take public comment? So now is the time, if you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the Zoom, using the button at the bottom of your Zoom panel, and Nick will unmute you and call on you in turn.
Okay, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as submitted with the caveat that the ceiling painted the same color as the front entry, but perhaps we more historically appropriate other examples of blue entry ceilings exist in the district. And we sent you guys some pictures and a comment.
Perfect. Thank you, Rochelle. I'm not seeing any other public comment, and there were none received through email, so we can close public comment for this application. Mark, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Rochelle. So obviously, the only change here is the ceiling. The applicant has provided some historical context for this particular treatment, which is clearly based on what she's just described, not unique to this proposal. It is a feature evidently of historic buildings, and it is extent at least, if not necessarily original or historic on more than one building. Thank you very much, Rochelle, and your colleagues at the Civic Association for, I'm looking right now at some very nice photos that you provided. Nick and I were talking about this and trying to remember if there were examples of this around Beacon Hill. I could not, for one, remember any, so it's very helpful to be reminded that indeed there are a few. The other one, since Rochelle didn't mention them, she's got 72 Chestnut, like Kristen mentioned, but also 136 Myrtle Street, 35 Chestnut Street, and 35 West Cedar Street. And this is again, that's 34 West Cedar Street, so. So are you saying, Rochelle, if you don't mind, that the house across the street effectively, or on the other side of the street, has this treatment, 35 West Cedar Street?
Did you hear?
Um, yeah, sorry. I didn't take this photo. Holland did. And to me, it looks white, but to him, it looks blue, but he says it's on across the street. The numbers stagger.
Yeah, yeah, but in the same general vicinity. Okay, yeah, it right. It's quite light blue, but it does look like it's a different color. There is 35 Chestnut. That building is certainly old. What I'm just trying to establish is, are these examples of at least a similar vintage of the house in question? It appears that they are. Do we know the date of the building, either Kristen or Nick?
72 Chestnut. Our building is.
Your building, yes.
1841.
1841. Okay, so this is Greek revival. Yeah, that would be consistent with at least a couple, 35 Chestnut, for example. Yeah. So let's see. So in terms of like, how do we treat this? In general, Kristen, we are not, we don't require that a particular color be historic to the building itself, although we certainly welcome applicants to do paint research where they can discover exactly which color or colors have historically been on the building. But rather, the standard that we generally apply is, is this color appropriate for the period of this building and the period of the building, meaning it's when it was built originally, in your case, 1840s, or, you know, if the building reads as Victorian, as many buildings of this vintage do because of a much later, but very substantial reworking in to update the architectural style, that it be appropriate to that later, you know, revision to its general stylistic interpretation. And so you know, that's, I think, the the standard that we would concern ourselves with here. And I think, again, I'm not sure we need to demonstrate that the ceiling of this particular entry was painted this color, but rather, is it historically appropriate for a building of this vintage? And it is otherwise fairly original, is that right? We don't have a a view of the whole facade, but I don't know if that's, if that's easy to pull up, Nick, but.
I got you. Let's see.
Yeah, this building is actually remarkably unaltered. This is most of this block, actually. Yeah, okay. And this is, I should also point out, you can kind of get a sense of this, just looking at this right now. This is a pretty, I would say subtle change to the extent that it's only going to be visible when you're kind of up close to the building and indeed, close enough to even look up at the entryway as distinct from, you know, the paint elsewhere on the facade and so forth. Yeah. Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, I think there would appear to be evidence in any case that this treatment of a different colored ceiling and in particular, some shade of blue was historic for buildings of this vintage in the district and is at least, again, something that we have seen in other buildings of this, of this vintage, whether, again, it was painted that way originally, or how long ago, we don't know. I think that might be sufficient for my purposes to be okay with this, but I welcome your, my colleagues.
I mean, it actually looks, if you're not paying attention, actually, let me change that. Even if you are trying to pay attention, it's so light, it's so pale, unless you're trying to stand there and analyze it, you're not going to notice this, the shade. I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but I have no problem with this.
Yeah, I was trying, that's what I, that's a better way to say it. I was trying to articulate that, in fact, the example that Rochelle provided, that she was even herself, I think, saying not to put words in her mouth, but I think it's blue. This is the ceiling after all, so it's almost by definition going to be.
I mean, the title is white blue.
Yeah, I mean, it almost looks like a different color, even just because it's in shade right here, even though it's actually white. So, so, okay, so you're fine with it. Anyone else have a dissent in here?
Yes.
Commissioner Finegold, please go ahead.
I have absolutely no problem with this, except that I wish that the color blue were a little more intense.
Yes. I think I go because other, other houses in New England have that classic blue for the entryway.
That's what I was going for, and I think that that's actually going to look brighter when it's up against the Swiss coffee.
And the Swiss coffee being that sort of cream color.
Is that white? Yeah, it's a cream.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I am reluctant to get too specific about what the color ought to be, absent trying to move us from something that we determine is not historic to something that is. And Nick, just can you confirm for us?
There are other historic colors that are blueser.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, indeed, indeed. But I think, you know, the, I guess, in general, I think I want it, just the caution would be, we'll want to avoid designing things for the applicant, that I think they're in, as long as that the proposal conforms to our enabling legislation and our guidelines. In my view, they ought to have the liberty to determine the exact details of within the confines of historical and architectural appropriateness.
The chairman, you just have to excuse me that I do speak as a designer, so that's why I'm reacting that.
And I certainly appreciate that very much, yes. But, yeah.
It's okay. I just was commenting.
Yeah, you, and believe me, I mean, you are not the only one who would often be tempted to want to design something to make it, you know, better to your own tastes or sensibilities or experience or expertise, whatever. Okay, anyone else who's not?
Yeah, Ralph.
The yellow is intense. The revving up of the blue would seem in keeping with that. The Mr. Finegold's example intensifying, I could understand it. If you walk by this entry and you see the yellow, it's quite striking. So one could sort of tone it up a little on the ceiling. The ceiling, the blue seems regressive relative to the door. I know that you don't want us to design it.
Yeah, no, again, I appreciate the.
I'm just supporting.
Yes.
Supporting the option. Yeah, I understand why Mr. Finegold said what he said.
Thank you.
Kristen, what about this? What if we were to, we've done this before, I think, in fact, not that long ago, fairly recently. What if we were to say you can have the colors you've asked for? Or another brighter blue that you would, that you would, that you would select from among, you know, historically appropriate colors and submit to Nick, and it's up to you which one you use?
Sure. I would be happy to do it brighter. I was just sort of trying to find something that felt a little more subtle.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that, too. So and again, and Ralph and Mo, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so I will move that the application be approved as submitted with the proviso that the applicant, at her discretion, may select an alternative blue that is in some, in whatever respects brighter than the proposed color, that is also determined to be historically appropriate for this building and to be approved in advance by staff.
I second that motion.
Okay, Kristen, does that make sense? In other words, you can do this exactly as you proposed it, or if you want to submit to Nick, hey, what about this other one that's brighter? Can I do that one instead? He'll take a look at it, and if he says yes, you can use that one instead.
That sounds great. Happy to do that.
Terrific. Did I hear a second?
Yeah, that was making.
Oh, great. Thank you, Arian. We'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Finegold.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Kristen. You will get a letter from Nick outlining our determination if you have any questions or want to submit an alternative paint color, just follow up directly with Nick. Thanks for coming in.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is 62 Charles, which is, let me get back to my agenda here. 62 Charles is Jason Perillo is someone, is Jason here?
Good evening.
For 62, hi, Jason. Thanks for coming in. Welcome. Do you want to just, that is Jason, yes? Yes. Do you want to just give us a quick summary of what you are proposing? So Dress Boston is a tenant right now at 70 Charles Street, and they're moving to 62 Charles Street. And all they want to do is move their blade sign. The same, same bracket, same sign to the new location and position it above the entrance, and then they want to add their name in vinyl to the door. So that is pretty much the whole application. Right, okay. So it's new signage for this building that was a, another commercial space. Just again, clarifying questions. There was a sign there already, and you are proposing to use the same bracket, is that right? No, we're taking the bracket in the sign down at 70 Charles, and we're moving it to 62 Charles. Yeah, okay. Are you going to install the bracket in the same place that the old one was on this building? Yeah, it's going to be above the, right above the door. And if you, if Nick, if you can, or sorry, if you can scroll down, there's a couple other, there you go, that shows, that's a photo simulation of where the sign will go. Okay, but there was a sign, there was a blade sign at this business before, right? I believe so, but I don't think right now there's nothing, because I think. They moved their sign because they moved across the street, right? Okay, so just for the Commission's benefit, this is the old Persona Jewelry Space, yes? And they did have a projecting sign at this location that was approximately, unfortunately, it's blurred out in Google Maps, I think, but in approximately that location. And since we don't have a wider view here, there is another projecting sign for the adjacent business. So yeah, it was that sign that, that, thank you very much, Nick, that's very helpful. And they, they had a belt sign, but you're not proposing that. You're proposing lettering on the glass instead, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the truck is in the way, but there is a projecting sign for Nuts Factory, which is the building, the business next door. Now it's fine. There is one, I promise. In any case, it's, yeah. There it is. Thank you, Nick.
Wow.
So the bracket is going to be at about the same height, hopefully, maybe exactly the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that architectural detail. Okay. Very good. So it's a similar bracket to what was there and, and what is also there for the Nuts Factory business. I want to just establish Commissioners that there was there, there was a sign there already. The reason I'm going through all this trouble, Jason, is normally our guidelines, which, to which we are delegated, the city's sign guidelines authority to administer them, call for one belt sign per business and one projecting sign per building. This building is one of a few that is a special case in the district because it has multiple storefronts in it, another being right across the street at the Charles Street Meeting House, across the way down the street, and then in the other direction, the Lincolnshire Building that has like the pizza place and so forth. Those have multiple projecting signs for businesses because they're large buildings with multiple storefronts. So I think this fits into that category, which is a long way of saying, having a projecting sign here, in particular, replacing one that was already there, I think is appropriate for this location. Thank you, Nick, for rooting around to find all that context. That's very helpful. And again, so as you see, there is a space for a belt sign. Nuts Factory has one. They're entitled to one here, but they're not installing one, but instead are proposing lettering in on the, on the windows and the door, correct?
Yeah, it's just the door.
Just the door, not. Yeah, actually, if you scroll back up, I think, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, there is going to be the lettering on the bottom of those window panels as well. Okay, okay. So again, just in terms of clarifying questions at the moment, Commissioners, any, anything that's not clear about what is proposed?
I think, no, because there's, he's just moving the sign that's there from 70 to 62. Yeah. And you've made it clear that he's okay to have an extra blade sign in that building. I think it's perfectly simple and reasonable.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, why don't we go ahead and take public comment? If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in your Zoom, on your Zoom panel, and Nick will unmute you.
Perfect. First up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose the reuse of the existing blade sign from its previous location, as it was already approved as satisfying guideline I six. We oppose two window decals as guideline I nine limits signage to a single sign and one projecting sign per business. End of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle. I'm not seeing any other public comment, Mark, so we can close it for this application and turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Rochelle. So I think the question then before us is, what about the lettering, the extent of it, the size of it, and so forth? So again, Jason, just for your edification and members of the public, in general, as Rochelle mentioned, we have a guideline about one sort of flat sign per business, so there can be more than one of those on a building if there's more than one business in the building. But that generally refers to a sign that's applied, you know, above the storefront typically, a belt sign or a flat sign and so forth. We have a, we also have a general guideline that, let's see if we can find it here, guideline I five, the Commission will consider the appearance of a proposed sign on the building and on nearby buildings, the effect of the sign and decorative and other architectural details, and ancillary structures required for installations. And then I seven, the number of signs, their location, their method of attachment are significant to sign considerations, and each should relate to the size of the storefront and the scale of the building. So I think our question here is, in lieu of a request for a belt sign, a flat sign above the business, is the three are the three sets of lettering on the two storefront windows and the door, an appropriate substitute. As you can see from the drawing, thanks, Nick, even together, the three of them are smaller in total area than what likely would have been the size of a belt sign, the Nuts Factory sign. in total area than what likely would have been the size of a belt sign, the Nuts Factory sign, for example, next door, which is the storefront to the right, you know, covers most of that with that lintel. So in terms of its visual impact, it's perhaps even less. Um, I would also note for my colleagues, uh, what I think is perhaps a a useful and instructive, if not determinative analogy, which is that record shop that's on the corner of Joy Street and Owo Street, which has three large picture windows uh and no belt sign. And we did approve uh a graphical treatment on each and every of the windows in lieu of a belt sign in that case. Like this case, it seems to me the lettering was uh modest in scale, certainly a quite small percentage. Oh, there it is. Thanks, Nick. Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's in one view and not the other. You can see, okay, that square in the middle, I think, was on, is on all the windows now. Um, and uh unfortunately, it's, it's an older view on the other side, but it's on those three long uh windows on the long side. And we, we determined in that case that because the graphics were uh, you know, subtle enough, not overwhelming that it was appropriate. I think this is kind of like that.
Well, isn't this a much smaller shop? And what I mean, and here's my thing, and I always feel like I have to ring the bell on this. When we start making little exceptions here and there, that just opened a door for more of this to come. I think that if we keep it nice and clean, you know, the sign, you know, we have, we have the signage uh on the bracket, and then why not just do one window, and if they want to have it be a bigger sign and one window and that be the end of it? Why, why make it more than that? Because it's not a huge store, it's not a huge location. So why, why do that?
Well, I, I think, and I wouldn't presume to speak for the applicant here, but the um you know, I think it's fair to say we could reasonably conclude that the intention of any signage, particularly on a busy street like Charles Street uh is to allow uh potential shoppers to identify the business and um that as a result, other things being equal for that purpose, not for our purpose, but for that purpose, more is better. Uh, more in terms of the number and the size. And uh, I, I, I guess I would just offer uh an alternative view uh not to dispute what Commissioner Allen is saying, but to say that uh I would think of this not as an exception, uh but an interpretation of the guidelines for this specific context. Um, in cases where we have differed from a sort of what seems to be standard procedure uh or, or at least a typical um uh thought process or determination, I think we've been careful to uh say that the uh the difference accounts for the unique circumstances of the proposal, and we have to, you know, in other words, we don't have any rules per se um that are so unambiguous that they could be applied in any situation regardless of the context and with, without even knowing the particulars uh of the building upon which it's, or for which it's proposed. So I don't see this as an exception. Uh, I see it as if it uh, uh, an interpretation of the guidelines, given the, the proponent's desire uh to do something other than a belt sign. I think we're within the, the confines of, of I seven, which talks about the number of signs or location and the method of attachment are significant design consideration, and each should relate to the size of the storefront and the scale of the building. I think what's proposed is appropriate in scale uh for this building.
Now, I mean, just something to, to, I mean, to just keep in mind, because when the civic association, they're, they're kind of saying the same thing that I'm saying, and I'm wondering.
But.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mo.
No, it's just that, that you finished, Commissioner Allen.
I mean, I think that, while I understand the spirit in which you're saying this, um I've seen enough to know that this is a nice way for someone to come around and say, well, you did it for them. And even though you said everything that was just very, very articulate, somebody else wants to do the same thing with a sign that's a little bit bigger, but not as big, but not as this, not as that, you're opening a door that we probably don't need to open. And to be honest, yes, Charles Street is a busy street. It's been a busy street for three hundred years. Businesses survive with just two signs, and they thrive.
I make two comments, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Feingold.
Uh, number one, you mentioned Commissioner, uh, Chairman about the, what people do on Charles Street. They browse. They're walking along, and you know, when I've walked along uh along Charles Street, and I would come to a vacant store uh without a sign of that kind, uh, I would react like, oh, why is there vacancy? So I think the idea of gra, some simple graphic uh is good, but the point is not just Charles Street. Uh, you point out the record store. That's a terrific example. I mean, that's uh because it was, and I thought it was approved because it was plastic and inside uh it was not affixed to the exterior of the building that, that you all thought. Uh, I wasn't part of that discussion, I remember, but I, I thought that would, it's really fine. I've walked by it. I've walked by it a lot. Uh Haven't we approved as well lettering along Cambridge Street that's on, that plastic is on the inside of, of buildings? And we've been doing, you know, I worry much more what Cambridge Street is gonna look like in the, in the, you know, the short term as commercial places change over. And uh, I thought that we were approving lettering on the inside of the glass uh as well in some of those places. Uh, I may be, I may be mistaken, but I thought we were. Nick, do we, have we done that? Do you remember any such places where we've approved that?
Yeah, uh, several locations. Um, just across the way, I believe, um, it was a um women's lingerie um store. Uh, we approved simple signage on decals on Charles Street, um, along with a, a tasteful blade sign. So there, there certainly is precedent in the neighborhood that we've recently approved, correct?
That, thank you. Uh, so I have absolutely no problem with this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Feingold. Uh, any, anyone else want to get an Oren on this?
I've uh, I'm afraid I lost the thread of your uh position. Um, I, so um, would you care, could you say in a short form what it is that you suggest?
Yes, uh, my position, Ralph.
Yes.
Not Mo's. Okay, uh, yes, um, I'm saying for this purpose, uh, a few much smaller window decals equals one belt sign. I'm saying uh that I'm fine with this because they've elected not to use a belt sign, and instead, not unlike, for example, the way someone would choose to use lettering on an awning as a substitute for a traditional belt sign, they've elected to use lettering small in scale uh on multiple windows, which when added together, nevertheless constitute a smaller area than one belt sign. I think it's tasteful. I think it's uh appropriate in scale. Uh, I think it's consistent with our general guideline wherein we have to consider the number and scale of signs.
So uh, where would you place the, what you're calling the belt sign?
Uh, normally, it would be above the lintel, above the storefront. Yeah, basically, right there.
So, but the, you, you're in opposition to the blade?
No, no, not at all. No, I'm totally fine with that. I'm sorry if I didn't mention that. In other words, they're entitled to a blade and a belt. And I'm saying, I'm saying I'm okay with it because they've applied for a blade and a belt equivalent.
I, I believe that they've answered uh I'm, I'm with Mo.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm with Mo, too.
Simple and well done.
But I have struggled to articulate it as well as he did. Um, I'm also with Mo.
All right.
Uh, okay. Sandy or anyone else?
I'm, I'm fine with your position.
Okay. Um, very good. Um, okay, uh, is, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve and submit it.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote uh on the motion uh to approve and submit it. Commissioner Allen.
No.
Was that a no?
Nay, no.
Nay, thank you. Sorry, just didn't quite hear. Want to make sure we got it on the record. Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Jason. The uh motion passes, which means the application is approved, which means uh Nick will send you a letter uh outlining our determination. If you have any uh questions, please follow up with him directly. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, thanks. Good evening. Thank you very much. Bye.
Uh, next is forty-eight Beacon Street. I think I saw Allison. Yes, hi, Allison.
Hi.
Is it just you, or is it anyone else coming in?
It's just me, and I'm unfortunately worked late, so I am at the Boston Design Center. So if there are any noises, I apologize in the background.
No problem. It sounds fine. Uh, welcome. Thanks for coming in. You want to just give us a quick summary of what you, we have your application, but just give us a quick, quick summary of what you are proposing.
Okay, so we are proposing to add, we basically need to add some kind of air conditioning to our unit. We've had an issue with the window units being on the tenth floor and me feeling anxiety every time they're moving or on or vibrating that they're gonna fall out the window. So even though we attach them super well, it scares me a lot. Um, it's also a pain. And so we um, we decided to go with mini splits, which would be very environmentally sound. Um, and it's just the best way these days to try and heat and cool your apartment. And so um, our issue was, we tried to go through the chase of the building, and unfortunately, it is completely full from the two units above who also have many, I believe, mini split units, but they have compressors on the roof. And so there's no room for us. Um, so we tried many times to get through that chase, and it wasn't working. So we believe that our only opportunity now is to go um through the mortar outside at the, I believe, around head height in the apartment and go straight up, and then we are going to tuck our wires over the edge and attach to the compressor. In order to do that, um, we are proposing to have those wires there and put a cover. We've actually, when we met with the committee, they suggested a round cover as opposed to this kind of square cover, which um, I'm happy to do either. So um, I liked their idea, too. It would match up with the downspout that's there now for the, it's like the drainage pipe there. Um, we just looked at it closer um on site, and it looks like we might even be able to fit it in the corner tucked in between the current pipe and the corner, which would make it even less visible. But we are proposing to put it on the outside because we're not a hundred percent sure that they can fit it within that space. So we'd like to get it approved to be either on either side, and then if we are able to put it in the corner where you really basically don't see it, that's what we'll go with.
Okay, so this is actually quite helpful. This, so it's in the corner that's circled here. So Beacon Street is at the bottom. Spruce Street is on the left, so you would only see this from Spruce Street. Is that right?
Yep, and it's just two levels, and it's so high up, but if you stand down there, there's a visual of that as well. It's really tough to even see any of it. So, I mean, I believe it will disappear. It's probably not quite as intense. I, I will say the camera does kind of make things look a little more wild. So with my naked eye, I can see a little bit better than the picture, but um generally, it's not easy to see that high, and it's tucked in, it's essentially the back of the building for us, for my unit. But it's within, it's encased in our little U shape there. Yeah, so it really does kind of look like that, but you can zoom up, and there's a pipe there on the corner. On the opposite side, there are some exposed wires on the building that are just hanging that come out from each level. And we're, we think that's probably not the best, so we're we'd like to invest in making it look very, look nice and feed into the building. It will patina over time, and it will essentially just look the same as the pipe that's there.
Okay, that was my one question. Actually, I have two questions, but one is that what's the pipe that's there now? And is this gonna be the same material that will wind up the same color?
Yes, so this pipe that's there now is from what the, the company said it is copper, and over time it darkens. And so this should darken as well to look the same. But we actually can get the exact same. We don't, that was an example picture, but we can actually have them match this pipe, so that it's the same.
Perfect, yeah, that's, and then.
We looked into that as well.
Just in, since you already met with the Civic Association Committee, it sounds like just anticipating a comment, not to uh speak for them, of course, but uh I thought it was a good one. I think they made here about, so this is, it's because of where you are, it just needs to go up two floors, but the gutter, the downspout, of course, next to which you're proposing to put this thing goes all the way down or further down, right?
Yeah, it goes into, it goes about five levels into the elevator chase. But I did find an image of um another downspout in the neighborhood that dives into the building higher up. It's actually at street level, but it's like before the ground, and so I have found precedent for that as well.
Yeah, I was just, I was just asking, I think there was a suggestion that if you could make it, even though you don't need it to go down from your place, if it also went down a little bit, it might even make it, help make it go away even more, that you don't notice.
That's partly why we want to put it in the corner if we can, um, because there was a comment about that. But um, our issue is that unlike many people in Beacon Hill, we are very much not the rich part of the, we, we don't have the amount of money that other people do. And I know you're not supposed to talk about the cost on here, but we have um we, we have to hang scaffolding, and in order to go that additional level, it will be quite substantial in cost for us. And so if it doesn't need to be, and we found precedent for it not to be, we thought tucking it in beside the pipe, it'd also be, it'll be a smaller pipe than the one that's there, so it should just kind of blend in and disappear, my, is my hope. Um.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's why we're really aggressively trying to get it to fit in the corner where you wouldn't even know where it starts.
Yeah, well, I actually thought it was this other corner that we're looking at right now that you could see from like the common, but it's it's not. It's the one that's on the inside.
No, yeah, and the one over there, uh unfortunately, there are about four wires that come out of different levels and just hang flopping against the building. So instead of doing that, we which I, I have photos of that as well, but we are, we are trying to be responsible and encase it.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, this is zoomed in pretty, this seems quite innocuous, but okay, uh, appreciate the clarification.
So where you stand, you might not even see past our level, is my point. So it's not like you're ever looking at it straight on where you'd be like, oh, that pipe stops there. It doesn't go all the way into the elevator.
Right, okay.
We'd prefer to not have to go all the way down, um, because we're not sure we can afford to, but
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's our problem, not yours.
Right.
But if we have to, we will.
And, and then the um, if you can go back to just the, the drawing of the actual piece, uh, Nick, um, how wide is this thing?
So he said it will be, it shouldn't be more than two inches deep by four inches wide, but it could be even less. It's just essentially three little wires that have um some insulation on them. And so they said an inch and a, I believe it was an inch and a quarter, but it's somewhere in that range um for each of them. So when you tuck them together, it, but if it's in a round pipe, it would be smaller than the existing pipe.
Okay.
But if they wanted the pipes to match, we can make it bigger.
Okay, so to sum up, um you're gonna make it as small as possible. You're gonna make it round if possible, and you're gonna tuck it as far into the corner as possible.
Yeah, either against the other pipe or behind it in the corner, which I'm quite hopeful that we can do that, go, having gone over there yesterday to inspect.
Oh, right, yeah, that, then it would really go away, because the, so, okay, I can't tell from this picture, but so the existing one is not actually all the way up in the corner. It's
It's a, it looks like it's about three and a half to four inches away from the corner.
Right.
Um, but I couldn't, the windows are being like painted and stuff on the inside, so I couldn't actually open them up and get get out there. But that's, I took a photo, which I can share my screen and show you the photo if that's helpful. I think that would probably be helpful. There's a lot of shadows, so it makes it a little bit challenging. Oh, there we go. Okay, so it's a little hard to see, but when you're because there's a screen there as well. But um, let me, do you want me to share my screen?
Uh, let's see, do we? I don't know if we need to. I think unless it's easy, Nick, if, if uh I think Nick would need to.
Uh, yeah.
I think I just clicked the green thing. You want me to try?
Yeah, yeah, give it a shot.
Okay, here we go. Send request. Okay, so.
Go for it.
All right, so this is the image. Um oh, is it working? Okay.
Not yet.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I think the boat is leaving right now from this terminal, so don't don't mind the, the boat noises. I, it doesn't look like this is working.
All right, so when you share, when you, when you hit share, make sure you hit the little square that shows the picture, and that way we all see the picture.
Um, I hit the share. Hold on, share. Let's see. Is it working now?
Mm-mm.
Did you click on the picture?
I think so.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, that's very helpful. So you're gonna try to put it to the left.
Okay, so this is the, this is the brick here, which is the edge of the window, but in the shadow, that's the distance between. So if they can tuck it here, we will do that. The other option would be to just put it on the outside of that and just match the material. So you want?
Great. Okay, that would be even better. Um, okay, that's very helpful. Thank you for sharing that. Um, okay.
My, my, my screen is just showing the original pipe, original pipe. Oh, there, ah.
So in, yeah, see right in here, that's about, it's three or four inches there that we're hoping we could tuck it in. So it would be completely hidden, so that you wouldn't see it at all. Um, and it would need to obviously be approved by our building to do that as well. So we wanted to find out, we would like to get the approval for the outside with the stipulation that if it fits here, we would move it in there.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay.
Because it may not be possible, and we don't want to have to come back in a month and be like, okay, and it doesn't fit. So now can we do the outside? It was, um,
Okay, right. Got it. Okay, thank you.
I love that you're being proactive. I love that.
Yeah, proactive is good.
Time is love, the essence.
It always is.
Uh, let's see. So why don't we go ahead unless there are further clarifying questions from uh, any of the commissioners, let's go ahead and take public comment again. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand using the button on the bottom of the Zoom panel, and Nick will unmute you.
All right. Uh, first up is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay. Beacon House Civic Association, we do not oppose the, this application is submitted, but suggest the downspout or conduit extend downwards to match the visible length of the existing downspout for visual continuity. While guideline A nine requires HVAC components to be installed in such a manner, they are not visible from a public way. The proposed conduit solution minimizes the visual impact. End of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle. Uh, Mark not seeing any other public comment for this application, so we can, uh, close it and send it back to you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Rochelle. Um, so yeah, I think, uh, and, and, you know, to be clear, this is to access, uh, HVAC equipment that will be ultimately on the roof, uh, and not visible from the public way. So in, in fact, this is uh, minimizing to a significant extent the visibility of the actual equipment. Um, all of these we've seen are, are quite zoomed in. Uh, it's on this unremarkable secondary facade of this very tall building, so visible only at a great distance and only against an existing, uh, you know, uh, copper downspout. Uh, it looks like if it proves feasible to tuck it all the way in the corner, it will become effectively invisible. Uh, and even if simply put against the copper downspout, um, you know, the, the, the visual impact of this thing seems really pretty de minimis to me from that distance and from what is likely to be only a short stretch of Spruce Street. So that's a long way of saying, uh, I think I am fine with this.
Is it possible to say one last thing?
Yes.
About it. Um, where it goes into the building, it looks like the brick color changes too. So you already, that's more of the eyesore that you noticed than mine just kind of dying out there and turning in. And, um, and we do also have, I didn't show you guys that, but there is, um, on West Cedar Street, there is an example of it coming down and cutting into the building as opposed to going all the way down. So I took a photo of that as well, if that's helpful.
I think so.
No, we've got it.
Yeah, well, well said.
Yeah, I think, right, I, I, anyone else, uh, and I, um, now that I understand better which side of the building it is, I, I thought it was the side that you see from the common wherein you would see more of it. If, it would be more apparent if it didn't go down further. But, uh, I, I don't know that you're likely to see much of this at all. And so I, I don't feel we need to, I appreciate the suggestion from the Civic Association to make it go all the way down for continuity. But again, it's a, it's a purely utilitarian, uh, uh, you know, accoutrement that is, um, uh, you know, industrial in nature. It's a conduit. Um, you know, I think the visual impact is minimal, so I don't think we need to impose the additional expense of doing that. By the way, also, finally, I would just say for further context, this does come up from time to time. We just had one within the last six months, I think, where someone was proposing to put a conduit on a dog's breakfast of cables and conduits and stuff, a cover, uh, across an alleyway. I forget the street, but, uh, so we have approved things uh, directly analogous to this, uh, that serve the same purpose, the, the exact same purpose, uh, that were, uh, more visible, uh, uh, less innocuous than what's proposed here. Um, indeed, I don't even know if the proposed cover that was approved more recently was, was a copper material. Um, so I think this is consistent with our prior record of decision as well for things like this.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'm feeling like someone might, might make a motion.
I'm moved.
Oh.
And can you just-
Make motion first.
Mo, can you be more specific? Is that, uh, to approve or submitted?
Uh, excuse me, I make a motion to approve or submitted.
Okay, and Ari, indeed, was that a second?
I'm definitely seconding.
Okay, we will vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Ally, for coming in. You'll get a letter from Nick. Uh, any questions, please follow up with him directly. Thanks. See ya. Okay, twenty Lewisburg Square, which is, let's see, we'll get the name here. Uh, Kevin, I think I saw Kevin.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Kevin, welcome. Thanks for coming in. Uh, we've got your application, but do you want to just give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Sure. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, so on the back of twenty Lewisburg Square, there is a uh, section of roof that has, uh, existing about a half dozen, uh, condensers on the roof that are roughly within six feet of the edge of the roof. Uh, so per code, we need a fall protection element there. Um, this area is partially, uh, uh, visible from Pinkney Street, kind of up over, uh, one roof, picking up the corner of it. What we're, uh, proposing is a painted steel rail, which matches the current, um, steel balustrade rail that is on, uh, twenty Lewisburg Square. It is also consistent with the, uh, neighboring, um, house eighteen right next to us, uh, in pretty much the same design of a painted steel rail, of roughly in the same plane within a couple inches and the same height.
Can you show us an image, please?
Uh, sure. So Nick, you should have the, uh, yep. So you can see on the left-hand side, that elevation is the existing, uh, rear elevation of twenty Lewisburg Square. We have a, uh, existing, uh, painted black steel balustrade that's running, uh, from the sixth floor in a spiral staircase down to a roof deck, which then connects as well to, uh, other fire escapes as you go down. On the right-hand side is the proposed elevation on that flat dormer there. That's where the painted black steel, uh, rail would be installed as fall protection. If you zoom in on the upper right-hand elevation, um, yeah, that one right there, there you can see, yeah. I don't know if you have good zooming capability. Oh, yeah, there you go. Um, you can see that in, as you're zooming in, you can see that in, uh, planar elevation, the next door neighbor, which is not viewable from, uh, Pinkney Street, but has a, um, a very, very similar steel fall, uh, painted black steel fall protection balustrade. So we are proposing the same one. Um, and the elevation difference is only due to the actual elevation difference of the roof as the street steps down. So same height, uh, relatively the same detail, very plain fall protection, painted black steel rail balustrade. And if you go south on the page, you can see the, uh, uh, image, actual image of um, twenty and eighteen next to each other.
That, we can see, where can we see this from, from the public way?
Uh, so on Pinkney, uh, right before you get to the corner of twenty Lewisburg and Pinkney, um, about kind of one, one house back, looking up over the roof. You can just, I don't think I have, um, yeah, I don't think I have drawing capabilities here, but you can just clip kind of the corner of this steel rail. Um, we did some work to this, um, back dormer. About a year ago, we were here in front of the committee, and you could just clip the very top, uh, visually, top of the door in this elevation. So you're seeing maybe, I don't know, two, uh, one-third of the actual balustrade from the street, which is very much in the distance. These pictures in the lower right are taken from our roof deck.
What is the purpose of the balustrade?
Uh, fall protection from the, uh, for servicing the equipment on the roof.
Fall protection.
Yeah.
To keep people from falling.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so Mo, the, the spot from which this is visible, if it's not obvious, is if you know, if you're familiar with twenty-two Lewisburg Square on the corner, it has a large L. Um, and that L is, um, only about two stories, I think. And, uh, so there's, uh, sort of a break in the, in the buildings above two stories there behind it down on Pinkney Street. And so it's sort of, uh, when you're around the corner, you look up over that two-story L on twenty-two, and you can see this.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
In the summertime, it's actually completely occluded by a tree when it has leaves, or whatever that's worth.
Uh, okay, so, but you can't really see that railing on eighteen from there, right?
No, you can't.
Right, okay, so that's, uh, uh, instructive, or at least to describe what it is that you're talking about, but not necessarily for our purposes of determining the appropriateness of this, because you can't see it from there.
Correct.
Okay, um, and let's see, since we're just looking at a, an elevation here, just to clarify, this railing turns the corner. Oh, you're showing that on the right. Yeah, you're showing that's the section or whatever there on the right. So it turns the corner. And Mo, uh, as, as you said earlier, really what you see is the corner. You see the part that faces Pinkney, and then a some of, but not all of the part that goes parallel to the facade, to the rear facade toward uh, sort of easterly toward, toward, uh, the neighbor. Okay. Um, okay, any other questions as to what's, and it's just this for this proposal, right? Just this rail. Okay, any other questions regarding what is proposed here, just for clarifying clarity's sake at the moment? Okay, um, don't see, hearing none. We'll go ahead and take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please press the button on your Zoom to raise your hand. Nick will unmute you.
Hey, uh, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Uh, Beacon House Civic Association, we oppose the proposed railing as it resembles a standard roof deck railing and is visible from multiple public ways and does not satisfy guideline C three. Specifically, we fear its existence will provide visual precedent for easier future approvals to come a visible roof deck. We suggest a simple pipe railing with a top and mid-rail, besides by the safety requirement, and is also seen in various locations around the neighborhood. End of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle. Uh, not seeing any of the public comment, Mark, so, uh, back to you.
Okay, well, Rochelle still has the floor. Rochelle, uh, could I just ask you to clarify? You mentioned the pipe railing. I'm certainly aware, uh, even on this very block at Lewisburg Square at the other end, there's at least one building. I think there's one on the other side too, uh, that has a pipe railing that's, let's just call it forsaken argument, about as tall as what's proposed here, like a regular roof deck railing. Is that what you're talking about, or some other kind of pipe railing that wouldn't be as tall?
We're talking about, uh,
Yes, like that.
Yeah, basic minimum OSHA railing that would, um, be okay for, um, maintenance people just to be up there, but not per code to offer a deck.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of come back, it would involve needing to change the railings and code.
Okay, so speaking of the OSHA code, and maybe more importantly, the Boston Building Code, um, I, I, I don't profess expertise on this, but, uh, just as we're talking, I will admit to looking it up. And, uh, is it not the case, uh, that the code requirement can be satisfied uh, with something short of this? Let's just say, for example, some kind of an- anchor points for, uh, what are they called? Uh, uh, some kind of personal fall protection system, like a harness? Could you not just install, let's say, a railing, a low-profile pipe railing, a foot tall, to which one could attach?
Yeah, a, a little bit of our, uh, our presentation or our hope for this was just kind of the human nature of use, uh, from a liability standpoint, um, in, you know, as services go, do they actually clip off? Um, or do they just go up there? So fall protection would be a little bit, uh, call it more foolproof, um, from a liability standpoint.
Okay, but to the direct question about the, uh, requirements of the code, is it in fact the case that you don't need a railing this tall?
Correct. You could just do tie-offs.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, thank you. Um, so this is, uh, so on the one end, you, you know, th- this is just understanding that we, we have been at this location quite recently, uh, or around the front of this house, uh, looking at a proposed roof deck railing on Mount Vernon Street that was visible across this lower portion of Lewisburg Square from roughly the same spot on Pinkney Street. And in adjudicating that application, which was ultimately approved with some significant revisions to reduce its visibility, we did note for the record that there are a number of visible roof deck railings in the immediate vicinity. One just up the block on the other side of Pinkney, uh, across the street at fifteen and seventeen Lewisburg Square, and then a small piece of one on this side of the square, a few houses down that's visible from Pinkney Street. But to the Civic Associations, Rochelle's comments, I would, I would make a distinction that those, to the best of my knowledge, are proper roof deck railings. They are railings that are meant to provide um, the necessary, to satisfy the requirements for a deck, um, as distinct from simply access to service workers and so forth. And so I think that's, again, uh, instructive, but not determinative in this case. In this case, since we're, since a roof deck is not contemplated, uh, it does seem like there are, the applicant has confirmed that there are uh, less visually impact for, uh, methods by which to satisfy, um, the, the need and indeed the code requirement. But again, I offer your, to my colleagues, uh, your spirited rebuttal or, uh, uh, thoughts to the contrary or otherwise.
Is that opened? Are you open?
Yes, please. Commissioner Feingold?
Can we go back to the elevation drawing, please? Uh, thank you. Uh, my habit is to look at the whole rather than the part. It is part of my training, and I've been criticized by some commissioners for sometimes looking outside the purview, uh, purview, but because I'm looking at the whole. In this case, uh, I'm looking at the rear elevation, and I see one, two, three, four exam, four locations of similar railings. It wa, is three, four, uh, one, two, three, uh, that are already in place. Now, I know you don't see them perhaps, and that's, I could do with what, well, with, with the regulation. But this, this new one would add a similar railing in kind, rather than adding like a pipe rail. I think that would be so obtrusive, uh, and out of character with the rest of what we have here. So, uh, uh, I support the proposal because I think it provides continuity, uh, and calmness, uh, rather than adding, uh, a sort of, uh, uh, another element, though maybe, though maybe this rail is quote technically unnecessary, uh, I think it's, it, it is perfectly in, in u- unison with what is already there in the building. I, and I rest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, again, I, I, I must- Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, again, I, I, I must point out that again, it's important to remember, uh, our uh jurisdiction is limited and our mandate, our purview is narrow. Our jurisdiction is limited to what we can see from a public way, and our mandate is architectural and historical appropriateness.
But I know that, but.
Right, and, and so I don't believe um any of the other railings that we're seeing here uh on the existing building are visible from the public way. And moreover, I think, I, I don't know that this um, well, this view might be visible from a rear garden or something like that, but of course, this, this elevation is just illustrative to demonstrate uh the existing condition. Um, but uh, it's not like you can see this anywhere from the public way. So that the, the visual impact of the combined composition doesn't really exist outside of perhaps this person's private property in their backyard and so forth.
Yes, thank you for that uh, uh, clarifying. I mean, I, I know that, that's why I uh, uh, I, I phrase my comments about that I can't help but look at the whole. Whether it's in or out of our, our purview. I just think this makes sense architecturally to the whole of that building. Whether, whether you agree or not on, uh, on the, the, others may not agree that but that's, that's why I support as, as shown. I, I don't object to the re- the, the new railing up there and uh whether I see it or don't. I think of, of pipe rails, if flimsy pipe rail, like the other example, it looks really shoddy and uh, uh, out of, out of character with what one would put on a roof to protect uh, anything from uh, from being uh, object of, or person from falling.
I have to agree with, with you, Commissioner Feingold.
You do?
Yeah.
Uh, can you be more specific, Commissioner Allen? Uh, because Commissioner Feingold said a couple of things.
Well, yes, I, I am not an architect, but I can look and I can see. And I agree with what he's saying, the other side, the other picture does look, um. Flimsy, hard.
Yeah, so, so I, just to be clear, I just want to establish, Arian, that you are, uh, because are, are you saying?
Commissioner Feingold.
You don't like the pipe railing, or you do? Are you?
I like so. I like the offense.
You're, you're okay with what's proposed, or you just don't like?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I, I'm a commission, I'm agree with Commissioner Feingold.
Okay, thank you, um. Uh, sorry, lost my train of thought, um. Let's see, uh. So to the, to the applicant, um, Kevin, it is Kevin, right? Um, do we still have you, Kevin?
There we go, yeah, I just got to unmute.
Oh, sorry, and it is Kevin, right?
It is, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you, um, so uh, in general, um, i- i- you know, our guidelines with respect to, let's just call them railings for the moment, uh, since this is not technically a roof deck railing, but you know, in general, we want to make these things, uh, you know, any, any kind of architectural change of this nature to be as innocuous as possible, you know, and if it's, if it's ever possible to make it go away entirely, um, you know, that's, other things be equal a preference and is often good for the applicant, because then they can do whatever they want with it, because it's outside of our jurisdiction. So, uh, it's pretty common for us to ask in circumstances like this, and we're not seeing a uh, a plan at the moment, so forgive me if I don't recall, I did look at this in Google Earth, but um, to what extent might you accomplish this? Basically, the railing you've proposed, but pulled back further from the building is, well, how much leeway do we have to move this thing to make it less visible from Pinkney Street?
Um, the, the equipment is just about six feet from the edge, so I don't, um.
Not my crown.
I don't believe we're gonna get far enough away to make it disappear. We could probably move it in about three feet from the edge, so. Something like that, so about halfway to the equipment, just to give workability around the um, around the condensers.
Okay, now, the condensers are in this drawing to the right, is that correct?
Uh, they're kind of all along the back here.
Uh. Okay, I'm just looking at the house in Google Earth, and it looks like they're all on the easterly half of the roof, is that not right? Do you have a plan?
Yep.
Okay, so if you were to um, for example, pull the railing back almost to the, to the condensers, and then um, wh- where is the access relative to all this?
Uh. There's a uh, where are you there?
Which one are we looking at?
So there is a, if, if you look at the dormer to the left, um. No, to the right there, yeah, right there, um, there's a, a roof hatch that you come out of, right there, yep. And so then you've got to walk across the roof to the um, to the equipment on the, on the easterly side.
Okay, um, what about moving the hatch?
Oh, my God.
Um, well. Yeah, I mean, it's a, a serious amount of work, uh, in fact, from a project standpoint, that entire floor is already done, but um, I mean, that, that level, I mean, you could, even if, so I, I guess I would just propose this, that if, if you did move it to the main part of the roof, I think what you're trying, what you would avoid by moving it over, you would still have moments of um, kind of fall resistance that you would want there. Right, because what you're getting at is if you moved it closer, you wouldn't be walking as far from the hatch to the equipment. But you're only gonna get so close, so you'll still be up there and on the edge of the roof.
Right, okay, so, so now that we're looking at this view, um, the proposed railing would go, would turn the corner around that hatch, is that correct?
Uh, not around the hatch, you'd basically get up to right about the e- edge of the hatch. So as you came up, you would still have an open um access from where the hatch is over to the side.
Okay, which way does it open?
It opens so that you can, um, I think the hinge mark is uh, to, it towards the ridge.
The hinge is toward the ridge, so it, oh, okay, what I was gonna ask is if it opened the other way, could you just move the railing back? And still have the, no, okay.
But I, um, but I interject.
Yes, Mr. Jackson, please.
I think that this is about fall protection. Um, to use the design of the railings below suggests that this is an inhabited terrace. And what you need is something that is more minimal. I agree with uh uh Rochelle about uh going to a simpler notion about in, uh, in uh, pre- preventing falls, but not creating a notion that people continue to inhabit the roof. Um, so to my mind, what's the most minimal solution? Uh, the railing that's been suggested, a pipe rail seems uh too utilitarian. Can we get to something simpler, more transparent for that level, so that there isn't the uh notion that it's inhabited space, but it's about fall protection?
Yeah, Ralph, that's kind of what I was getting at when I was asking, you know, what, what are the minimum requirements of the building code? And what I was suggesting, for example, is you could imagine the simplest form of that, of course, would just be, you know, tie-down points or whatever installed in the roof, or even just a rail.
If you look at the proposed solution, if it were just the uh, if we could go to the proposed solution, if we, if you could go to the four sort of uh places on that um, the screen where there it's anchored and just have the rails at those point, the verticals at those point, and the har- a single horizontal, that's more transparent, that's not about it being inhabited, but that is about people being protected from a fall when they're on the roof.
So you're suggesting something that's as tall as this, but without all the spindles?
Yes, yeah, it's all the spindles uh suggest inhabited space.
Yeah.
And that's not what, and I think you can't shove it back because there's very little room for working uh between the rail and the equipment.
Right, um, and, and, and uh, um. Kevin, um. I went out and looked at this, uh, can you give us, uh, I, I think you would agree before, you, you don't see, you wouldn't see all of this from the street, right? You might see the first, you'd, you'd see the part that turns the corner, right, that faces Pinkney Street, which is up to the right in your diagram. And then you'd see some of that long run of, of the railing across the back, but not all of it, right? Because eventually it goes below, it's blocked by the building.
By twenty-two, yeah.
Just best of your, your, your best guess as to about how much of it you estimate would be visible, the length?
Uh, best guess, about one-third of this run that you're seeing on, on this elevation, that's center of the screen.
Yeah, okay, that's, I would have guessed maybe no more than half, so that's about consistent. So it's sort of this, just this, effectively this right angle, right? It's imagine it's about as much as you'd see on the, on your, on the upper right here, that turns the corner, and then a, a, a run of it about that long in the other direction.
That's fair.
Um, yeah. Uh, how tall is it? Forgive me, it's, it's small on my screen, I can't quite read it.
Yeah, actually, if you zoom in, I believe it's three feet, if I'm not mistaken. Three foot, yeah, three-five, three-six.
Three feet, six inches.
Yeah.
Okay.
So forty-two inch for fall protection.
Okay, now this is a single-family home, though, right?
It is, yep.
Okay, so if this is a roof deck, it could be thirty-six legally, right?
Uh, you need a guard rail that's forty-two inches tall.
Okay, I thought that only applied to multifamily.
Um, yeah, this um, there's a, I, I believe there's a, a place that this, this building falls in between because of its size, that we could deal with it like commercial. Um, so we've made forty-two at the top just for um, for OSHA regulations.
Okay, but I think we established, did we not, that you don't actually need uh, a tall railing to accomplish the safety requirement?
Correct.
Okay, so we could do something that was shorter than this, and we could do something that didn't have all the spindles, right? And still satisfy the code.
Oh, for sure. I mean, we talked about tie-downs, what we're talking about, or what, what we're proposing is something that's to us a little bit more in tune with the style of the building versus like a uh, more modern OSHA, like uh, uh, OSHA rail, and like we said, we could just do tie-downs, so this was just more from a given the um, how we know we all kind of will make precautions once in a while, and then just not do it from a safety standpoint, we just wanted a more robust fall protection for the roof. So we felt like this rail was just more in tune, so. Um, yes is the short answer to your question, Mark.
Okay, um. I mean, I, I suppose, yeah, this is the dilemma, um.
Mark, if I could just make a recommendation, sorry to interrupt. Um, I think we just need to stay um within our purview. Um, unfortunately, the building code's not in our purview, it's very narrow here. But just, um, we either think this is complimentary to the architecture, or we don't.
Oh, yes, for sure. I know, I, I, I'm uh only asking uh, because if there is a less visually impactful solution to this that still satisfies um, the, the motivation for proposing it in the first place, that we ought to explore that and then evaluate that alternative in light of our purview. Do we think that alternative is architecturally and historically appropriate? Um, at least with respect to the portion of it that can be seen from a public way. I was just trying to figure out, since they don't want a roof deck up there, is there something we could do that when you see it from the street, you don't see it so much, or at all? Um.
You see so little, it doesn't matter. Pardon me.
Well, you know, I, I think.
Yeah.
I'm slightly conflicted about this because, um, you know, when is a roof deck not a roof deck? Um, in, in the large majority of cases, I think it's probably fair to say that uh, the only portion of what we call a roof deck that falls within our jurisdiction is uh, or at least in many cases, is the railing itself and not the deck. And so effectively, I, I wonder, does it actually matter if there's a deck up there or not? Um, and to Nick's point, I think it's a very appropriate caution, which I appreciate. Um, I think we just need to think about this, is they want to put a rail up there. And what do we think about that? Period. Um. And uh, so I think I've talked myself out of uh, treating this differently because they're not proposing a roof deck. Um, they're proposing a deck railing and um, given our guidelines and our prior record of decision about such things, um, I think maybe we ought to just think about it in that context alone. Um. I'm not mischaracterizing what you just said, am I, Nick?
Not at all, nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh. Okay, in, 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 when viewed from that context, it is visible, right? So it's clearly in our, in within our jurisdiction. You know, our guidelines, you know, they're not rules, they're not law, uh, but they reflect certainly the starting place, uh, if nothing else, uh, and probably more uh of how to think about these things. And the guidelines, at a minimum, uh discourage roof deck railings that are visible from a public way. That's not to say that we don't approve them, certainly we do. Um, what we do do is try to make them as uh invisible as possible. Um, it appears uh from the recent adjudication of an application nearby this one, uh, that's visible from a location quite nearby this one, uh, that there are extant examples of roof deck railings that I would characterize, just based on my own observation, as being approximately as visual, visible as this one would be as proposed um, from a similar adjacent location. There are more than one, um, indeed. Uh, and so I think from that perspective, uh, I think I might be persuaded uh to allow this. But first, Kevin, I want to come back and say, you, you did indicate a little earlier that it, it may be feasible to pull it back three feet. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, given that again, as we, as we agreed before, the part of this that's really gonna be visible is the corner and about as much in both directions. How, how long is that thing? You, you're showing three foot six as the height. I can sort of do the rough math just looking at it, so the width of that thing in the upper right, the portion that turns the corner is five feet?
Yeah, it, it's gotta be, I don't know off the top of my head, but it looks to be about four foot six, five feet, something like that.
Four and a half, okay, so if you pull that back three feet, um, that's probably gonna have a not trivial impact on the visibility of this thing. You have a mock-up?
How can I get out of the roof hatch if you pull, push back?
Or, how much working space do they have if they're on that side of this, uh, that side of the equipment?
Uh, so Ralph, you, between, um, in the upper right-hand view, if we pulled it towards the left three feet, we'd have about three feet between the rail and the equipment. And if we pushed um this view away from us, uh, three feet, it wouldn't impact the equipment.
But that means there's an aisle in which one workman and can move uh on that side of the uh, between the rail and the equipment. He can't bend down, he can't, uh, yeah.
Well, uh, let me ask you this, uh, since again, I think we established that uh, the, the easterly, let's just call it half of this, is probably not visible at all. Right, so Kevin, would it not be an option to have it, pull it back three feet? Have the easterly run of the rail, go halfway down the roof and then you know, turn a corner again to make it a little wider, so you can get it, get it, get a little more space around the equipment?
I mean, so technically, yes, uh, from a design perspective, I wouldn't, I, I honestly, that would I feel like that would impact the elevation uh of this to pretty negatively, like you'd still pick up visi- visibly, you'd still pick it up from Pinkney, and then on the back elevation, you'd have this corner that happened somewhere along this back elevation to kind of would be a weird, an odd step to do that.
Okay, but if it's not visible, it doesn't matter, right?
Well, it's visible for us, right? So you're taking an elevation, you're making this step partway through with a rail that doesn't necessarily correspond to anything. So I, I, just from a design perspective, I wouldn't do that. But, and I, I understand in saying that, Mark, it goes against the, what you're trying to do, but I think from a design perspective, it would severe, call it severely negatively impact this, this building.
Okay, so, but you're, you're saying you could pull it back three feet?
In totality, each, each direction, the kind of um symmetrically, yes.
Yeah, okay, I think that. Yeah, okay, I think that would likely make a a positive impact from our perspective, I appreciate that. Um, you know, I think in light of, um, you know, such a good faith effort to further reduce the visibility of this, the fact that it's only visible from a short stretch of Pinkney Street, the fact that there are other similarly situated railings, again broadly defined within the immediate vicinity of this uh, pro- proposed alteration uh, that are likely at least as visible and that were approved by this commission, uh, that I think I I would be okay with uh, such a revised plan. Uh, there's a mockup up there now, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, not that this isn't our purview either, but I, you know, I think on things being equal, we want to make a timely decision on this for everyone's benefit. Uh, where are you in the, in the process of this, you know, because one option would be denied without prejudice and have you move the mockup and then look at it again and see if that does the trick?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, in light of the applicant's willingness to do that, uh, what do you think? Think we ought to at least since they're, since it's it's technically feasible and he, and he's willing to do it, I think I'm inclined to ask them to make that change, this is very consistent with what we've done in other roof decks. Can we make it less visible? I think maybe we can, we'll give it a try, check it again, see if that does the trick and then uh, pick it up again next month.
But are you, are you suggesting, Mr. Chairman, that it's a pipe rail rather than a vertical?
No, no, to be clear, thank you, Commissioner Feingold, I'm propose, I'm suggesting uh, simply moving uh, the railing as as proposed.
Oh, okay, as proposed, move it back and and to the, to the applicant, there's still room to get at the roof, get out of the roof hatch safely and into the, into the work area?
Yep, yes, I would, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, where do you took public comment, is that correct, Nick? Forgive me.
Uh, did we?
No, no.
Yes.
No.
We did, okay, yeah, sorry, it's been a long conversation.
It's true.
Uh, Rochelle, please nod if you uh, have yet to be heard. Uh, okay, why don't we go ahead and do that? Um, thank you all for uh, your forbearance there, this has been quite helpful, uh, let's go ahead and take public comment. Want to be heard on the record, please, uh, raise your hand, using the button under Zoom panel, Nick will unmute you.
Rochelle, uh, we did not speak already.
When we did public comment, right, yeah.
We did.
Yeah.
We did, okay, thank you, thank you, Rochelle. Yes. You and you had registered your objection because it's not, and you were talking about a simpler pipe railing because it's not a roof deck, thank you. Forgive me, uh, boy, senior moment here, um, okay, uh, so, um, I I think I'm gonna move that we deny this without prejudice uh, and request that the applicant, per the discussion, uh, move the mockup um, uh, by three feet in both the easterly and what is that? Uh, um, northerly direction, uh, toward the front of the house, uh, and toward Mount Vernon Street. Yes, northerly and easterly, three feet, uh, and that we uh, take the opportunity to reinspect the mockup in its revised location uh, to determine its uh, uh, resulting visual impact, visibility and visual impact. Uh, do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we will vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Let's stay.
Okay, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, and Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, uh, thank you uh, for your patience, Kevin, you will get a letter from Nick, so we have denied it without prejudice, which means we have not made a determination one way or the other. Um, and we're just asking that you go and move the mockup just as we've described. We'll take a look at it again and uh, get a sense for um, what, if any, visibility is left. And uh, then we'll reconvene next month if you are uh, available. And uh, we'll just readjudicate it based on the revised position and, you know, in light of the foregoing conversation.
Yep, sounds great, I appreciate it, Mark.
Very good, thank you very much for coming in.
Yep.
Okay, uh, thanks for your patience, everyone, I think next is right across the street, nine Lewisburg Square. Across the square, I should say. Uh, and that is gonna be uh, it's someone from nine Lewisburg Square here, thanks again for your patience. Thought I saw Tracy, uh, is it Tracy, is it you, or is it your architect? Oh, Bob, is it Bob?
And, yeah.
Bob has his hands raised.
Hi, I'm Emily from Melles and Palladino, I'm here with Bob Palladino.
Uh, very good, uh, welcome Emily and Bob and Tracy, um, who wants to 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 drive here?
I'll be doing the presentation, I was wondering, isn't it all possible for me to um, share my screen
Yes.
with this same presentation just to make it more accessible.
Please, yes, expansion, the whole body's here.
Great, and and Nick, while you're at it, can you unmute? Uh, it just says Bob and then Tracy Flannery as well, in case they want to jump in. Did we lose Bob?
She got, Bob should still be there, yep.
I'm, I'm here, yes.
Okay, uh, let's see, we just need to get the screen shared.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just, okay.
Okay, we are seeing that, Emily.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming in and uh, when you're ready, uh, why don't you just give us a brief summary of what you are proposing?
All right, um, our client Tracy Flannery and John Flannery came to us to help them design a thoughtful renovation of the fifth floor and roof of their home at nine Lewisburg Square, where they have lived for seven years. We are here tonight to present a design for advisory review.
Sorry, I thought this was design review, I thought, to get this approved, right?
Well, we're, I mean, we're still working through permitting and zoning. So what we wanted to achieve tonight was some direction on whether this um, renovation would be approved by BHAC before we complete an entire structural document set. Does that make sense? I mean, it's.
It, it does, um, we have you on for design review though, um, with the understanding that all of that was taken care of, so we, we can, I mean, why don't you proceed and the commission can give you comments as necessary, um.
But yeah, I think, let me just, let me just ask, Emily, if you could clarify, you mentioned zoning, um, just looking at this, um, I mean, I would understand a a little bit of the backstory here, you're combining a couple of units. Is that why zoning is implicated? Because otherwise, it looks like it's getting smaller rather than larger. Uh, what is exactly is implicated with respect to zoning here?
Um, well, we are proposing to add a roof deck and a roof hatch. Um, we, I mean, we're meeting the appropriate FAR, um, but we just before we designed the entire addition with the structural engineer, we wanted to make sure that, especially with the roof hatch that we're proposing, we wanted to make sure that BHAC was, was okay with it.
Sure, okay, so, um, and there's nothing else though, in terms of, you're not, you said you're not adding livable floor area? Because roof decks are as of right under zoning here, so that's, that's not gonna trigger uh, a zoning as far as we're concerned, so if this thing's not getting any bigger, I'm comfortable uh, adjudicating this tonight, you are on the agenda for design review, so it's been properly noticed for design review, which in the short version of which means, uh, if we choose to do so, we can approve this. And you, if we do approve it, you will have a certificate of appropriateness, which you can then use to build it if you want to. Um, if you decide later after fleshing out the drawings that you want to make some changes, you would just need to come back to us to the extent that any of those changes are visible from a public way.
Okay.
To readjudicate the, the difference, but otherwise, um, we are, we are, I believe, uh, by rights and and properly uh, set up uh, to issue your certificate tonight if if the commission so votes.
We believe, we believe that as well, we just don't actually have um, approval from zoning, so we wanted to just
Okay. I think I'm, I'm convinced, given what we know about this, and we'll, we'll, we'll hear a little more detail right in a moment, but uh, that I think we're okay to proceed.
All right.
So please proceed.
Okay, so this is nine Lewisburg Square here, um, just wanted to run through the existing conditions photos, this is the fifth floor addition, um, that we're proposing to change. Here is the fifth floor addition that was done in nineteen forty nine, also that we are proposing to change, this is from the rear. This is the view from Mount Vernon Street. These are some existing.
Can you just scroll back up there for a second, view from Mount Vernon Street, uh, got it, okay? And that's not from the driveway, that's all the way out on the street, just to be clear?
Well, mm, we, I do have a view taken from the sidewalk of Mount Vernon Street that will, I can get to in a little bit just to clarify what can be seen, but this is the rear of the building, let's just say.
Great, yes, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Um, this is the, these are the existing conditions of the roof currently. This is just a quick history of the building, so it was, it originally had the two doghouse dormers and a slate roof. In nineteen forty nine, it received this large addition, pretty much a full width addition that, you know, to us appears to be almost a fifth additional story as opposed to a dormer. This is a written scope of work, but I'll, I'll just give it verbally. Um, so our client would like to maintain the existing fifth floor space, but would like to upgrade the structure's outdated construction and provide a more historically appropriate design for Beacon Hill. Um, the existing front dormer has canted sides and the windows are single pane with steel frames and a large railing across the front. Um, the siding is unadorned and the roof is asphalt shingle. And we are proposing to replace this structure with a slightly narrower dormer, which would expose more of the original slate roof and would look less like a full additional story on the building. The new dormer would have true divided light historic wood windows, painted wood trim to match the color and details of the existing original house trim and flat seam coff- copper roofing. This is a rendering, side by side rendering of what we're proposing versus what is uh, originally or exa- sorry, currently existing. Um, moving on. At the rear, we're proposing to replace the existing asphalt shingle sided structure with a mansard shape with historic slate shingles, true divided light historic wood windows, painted wood trim to match color and details of the existing home. And we can get into a little bit more detail on this in a bit. This is the rendering side by side, existing and proposed. At the roof, we're proposing a new roof deck, railing and access hatch. Um, everything is not, nothing is visible from the public way except for the railing of the roof hatch here. And the rear railing is visible from one area of Mount Vernon Street.
Okay, and again, just to orient us, the bottom is Lewisburg Square, the top is, or is the front, I should say, and the
So this is the front, um, I can show you a view diagram, so this is Lewis, this is the square. This is the proposed new roof hatch with railing. And the, these are some view diagrams showing that from the, from the square, you can see, just see a little clip of the railing, we've lowered it as much as we can. Um, from the back, you can't, you can't be behind nine Lewisburg Square. So from Mount Vernon, you can see the rear railing. And we have mockups for both. Um, this is the mockup of the railing of the roof hatch here um, from Pinkney Street at the front.
Okay.
And this is the rear view from Mount Vernon Street, this is also the railing. Nothing else can be seen, the roof deck itself cannot be seen, the roof hatch itself cannot be seen, none of the, you know, anything else.
Okay, just to clarify, that view from the, uh, of the rear from the right, that is clearly up in the driveway of eighty seven, right? Uh, or eighty nine, pardon me.
Uh, no, this is from the sidewalk.
Really? Oh, okay, uh, the, oh, there's a car there, that's what fooled me, uh. Okay, very good, so that's, it's, it's through that tree from that, and I did look at this, it's, it's pretty much just from that spot, right? You don't see it.
Right.
For a long stretch.
About five feet to the left or right, you can't see the back of this building anymore. I mean, obviously, the trees would be, the leaves would be down at some parts of the year, but this is what you can get right now.
For context, we, it's, it's almost impossible to see through the tree there, but there is a railing on the adjacent building to the left, correct?
There, yes, there are railings that are visible all along the rear of this, sort of similar to the project that we just reviewed.
Yep, okay.
Um, and then just, in addition, the work at the roof would involve um, not only the roof deck, but we also are proposing to remove the existing nonoriginal skylights, removing the existing condenser, replacing all the asphalt roofing with slate or copper and repairing and restoring existing chimneys and chimney pots. I think the only thing that BHAC would um, have jurisdiction over is the chimneys and chimney pots. But we do intend to um, improve the materials of this entire roof structure.
Okay, and just to clarify that, you're, you're, what you mean is you're representing that the skylights uh, are not visible from the public way?
Correct.
Right, okay, I wouldn't think so. Uh, okay.
Um, and then just, just for record, we are also proposing to replace the storm windows with the approved versions and restoring existing exterior elements throughout. Um, just restoring, not replacing or removing and installing a new EV charger to match the approved BHAC specs.
Okay, that's, uh, on the sidewalk.
Sorry?
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk in the front, and we have um, a number of specifications for that at the end of this document. Um, we're using Boston Sash windows, we're uh, at the fifth floor, the rest of the windows are remaining in place. And we are just replacing the storm windows with the approved versions.
Okay.
Um, this is the railing that we are proposing. So the top of it has a space that allows it to feel a bit lighter um, and a, and a bit more transparent. Um, yeah, and we'd, we'd particularly like to get your view, your opinion on the dormer additions and the visibility of the roof hatch from the street, the, just the railing.
Right, okay.
So we might go back to
Good.
Everything that's sort of this lighter shaded color is not visible from any public space.
And uh, the, the, um, okay, so, yes, that, uh, I did have one question, but just on that point, uh, in the existing condition on the left, uh, what are those three rectangles that disappeared?
This is the existing skylights from the nineteen forty nine edition. They aren't visible from, but
Okay, right.
Just, they're part of our drawing, so we left them there.
Right, okay, thanks. Okay, so to sum up, uh, you are reconfiguring the front and rear facade of the top story, uh, kind of shaving off the trapezoid. Trapezoid sides of the, uh, uh, top floor addition, cleaning up the roof. Uh, adding a railing at the corner for roof access. Um, and on the back, redoing the, the fenestration, basically. Uh, replacing storm windows and then the EV port on the sidewalk, which is, I think, gonna be the least of our concerns, but, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, um, just one other clarifying question, you mentioned early in the presentation, something about. Uh, restoring more of the slate roof, and can you just? I may have just heard you wrong, but can you just say a little bit more about what you meant by that, because I'm not seeing much difference in terms of the roof plane? Oh, you mean just on the sides?
On the sides, yeah, well.
I get it.
Our goal was to pick the dormer up a bit so that you could see a band of slate roof below it, so it would look more like a dormer. As opposed to just a fifth.
Oh, I get it, I.
And this. These canted sides kind of cover a lot of the roof, and we've also pulled this in a bit. And created this sidewall that would be. Um. Slate shingles so that it really. I mean, although you can't really see it, uh, from very. From anywhere, but just trying to, to bring back the look of the original slate.
Right, okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then, just on that point, again, just clarifying for the moment. Um, you showed a nice sort of, uh, uh, three images detailing the history. Uh, and where you're, you're documenting that this upper floor, uh, addition was from nineteen forty-nine, um. The, the roof line that existed prior to that addition. Uh, that's obviously had, you know, pitched roof on either side of the dormers, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I gather probably at a steeper pitch than what's gonna result if you were to modify the dormer, or the, whatever you wanna, whatever we wanna call it. As, uh. Uh, as you proposed it.
The, the bottom portion of this original. Roof, we're trying to, like, bring back and keep.
Uh, okay.
The original slope, but then as our dormer pops up, obviously, it would become more of a sidewall. Or a mansard roof, so the idea was to create. Something that mimicked the. Original slate roof instead of just pulling, having this. Full width. Structure across the whole top.
Got it, okay, thank you, um, any other clarifying questions from the commission before we take public comment on this?
Yes, you mentioned, sorry. I had, um. You had mentioned that you were raising the roof. To step, uh, you were trying to show, uh, along the, along that edge, can you see my arrow?
No.
Maybe not, but you, you mentioned that the height of, that the height of the, the dormer is raised.
Just the sill. Just this, the sill, so we're pushing this back about. A foot, so that it exposes more of the slate roof. Below it so that it can appear more as a dormer than a fifth story.
Okay.
But we're not raising the height of the dormer roof.
Okay. And then just to, again, uh, maybe state of the obvious here, but just for the benefit of the commission. Uh, this is Lewisburg Square, it's in not quite the middle of the block, but it's the upper side. And Lewisburg Square is a private way, so our jurisdiction extends only to the portions of this that can be seen from a public way. Which in this case means Mount Vernon Street or Pinky Street. That's gonna be important, I think, because at least the right-hand portion of this, as we're looking at it now, is. Largely obscured by the balcony on the adjoining building that's not shown on the right here when we come up Vernon Street. Yeah, from that angle, because it's got an even larger, let's just call it addition. That.
Right.
That thing, um, and, uh, sorry, um, now, Mo, I'm trying not to editorialize. Um, but, uh, yeah, that blocks partially the, the view of the, the sort of trapezoid side, the, the cant or the chamfer, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, on at least that portion of it.
Um, right.
Wouldn't read from the public way, which is Mount Vernon Street, okay. Uh, so I think the view that we're gonna be most concerned about is the, the other side from Pinky Street, both because it's a little closer to the street. It's not obscured by the adjoining building and it's got the, uh, the, the railing, uh, there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, a- any other clarifying questions before we take public comment?
The ridge line of the, uh, overall building seems so much higher. On the left image than it is on the right.
Mm-hmm.
Are you reconfig, uh, are you changing the, uh? I, I don't see a section, so I can't tell how you're able to get.
Yes, oh, let's show this.
Yeah, it doesn't show the existing conditions.
The existing gable is dashed in a very, sorry, late. Um. And yes, we are proposing to. We, it's hard to see here, but we will maintain the existing slope. At the front and rear, or at the front, so you could. Still read it visually, but it won't exist in the center anymore, we're, instead proposing a roof deck.
Uh, how is it that you're able to chop off that much roof?
It's, yeah, it's about thirteen feet of. Um, of ceiling height on the fifth floor to the peak of the roof. And so we're able to create a flat roof, it'll, it'll be pitched somewhat, this doesn't really show it, but it'll be pitched. Underneath the roof deck, just a slight pitch to get the water off. Um, but we were able to provide, still provide a beautiful ten-foot ceiling on the fifth floor and have. Um, this, the, the actual roof come down a few feet.
So to that point, then, um. Can you see the ridge from either of the public ways? Will you be able to see them? You can't.
No.
So, so as, as pertains to our jurisdiction here and what we can see from the public way. Um. That this, this, this difference that Commissioner Jackson is talking about is not visible, you're, is what you're representing, okay?
Right, so you can, we have, you know, we have a mockup, and then we also have lots of photos. Um, from different areas of Lewisburg Square, and we have made sure to include the ones that were. I guess the most damning to the worst-case scenarios, and you cannot see the ridge from anywhere unless you were. In, in a plane.
Okay, so you can't see it now, and it's gonna be lower than it is now, so by definition, you won't see it when you put it, when you, when you re, were to reconfigure it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, unless we've got more questions for clarity's sake. Um, sorry, by the way, if you're hearing a lot of noise, we're, um, on Beacon Street, and we're being buzzed by helicopters right now. Um, uh, let's go ahead and take public comment, if you wanna be heard on the record, please raise your hand, using the button on your Zoom panel, and Nick will unmute you.
Okay, uh, first up we have is, uh, Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay, bear with me, because this is a long one. So Beacon Hill Civic Association, we oppose modifications to the front and rear shed dormers. As the proposed changes do not satisfy guideline A four, which requires changes to be appropriate to the original style of the building. Or the altered sound, as is the case here, and also do not satisfy guideline A seven. Which does not permit changes to openings and facades or windows or doors unless they involve restoration of documented original features. Per guideline A four, we find both dormers, but especially the front and the historically significant mid-century modern style. Constructed in nineteen forty-nine to replace the original doghouse dormers should therefore be left in place to show why. There was growing importance to form the historic district by nineteen fifty-five to prevent more loss of historic fabric to contemporary alterations. Guideline A four recognizes that all architectural changes should be appropriate to its altered style. If it has been significantly altered to reflect the characteristics of a later style. Additionally, the proposed change to a traditional dormer on the front facade and the proposed changes to existing windows on the rear facade. Do not satisfy guideline A three, as neither is a replacement of an existing architectural detail. And both falsely allude to it. Also, the steel casement windows with metal sashes are originals in the nineteen forty-nine reconstruction. And are therefore rare in the district. Guideline D three specifically allows them to be replaced with an appropriate metal window. We oppose the proposed, we oppose the proposed roof deck. As is very visible both from Pinky Street and Mount Vernon Street, and does not satisfy guideline C three. Which states visible roof decks are inappropriate, end of comment.
Good.
Hey, uh, thank you Rochelle, um, Mark, I'm not seeing any other public comment for this application, so we can, uh, close that up and send it back to you.
Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that, uh, thank you Rochelle, I think then what we have before us, I mean, I think Rochelle is nicely teed up. Perhaps, uh, the issues, um, there is, uh. Uh, in general, the, the largest part of this is the, the, the reconfiguration to an extent, uh, of this fifth floor addition. Um. And, uh, then there's the, uh, addition of, uh, a section of roof deck railing. Uh, not unlike what was proposed in the, in the earlier application that sort of turns the corner. Uh, and Emily, could you just confirm for us again, that? Well, you've got a mockup, can we just go back to the photo of the mockup, what you actually see from Pinky Street is just a corner of that, is that correct?
It, it's not the roof deck, it's the roof deck hatch. It's the railing around the roof deck hatch.
I'm sorry, yes, the railing around the hatch, uh, which is shown mocked up on the left. Can you just circle that with your mouse, so I, I know where it is, but? Yeah, thank you, um, and that's. Uh, is, is presumably there's, there's some other section of roof deck railing. That's a part of this roof deck that you just can't see from here, it's just.
It's further behind.
Right.
Um, or closer into the center of the building, so it's not visible.
Okay, so, uh. Let me take the really easy part first, uh, the EV port, it's, uh, just from what we saw, it looks. Uh, virtually identical to the one that's fifteen feet from this one at this point, I think, right? Uh, right down this, the square, and there's two across the street at this point. Um, that seems to be in order. Uh, so unless anyone has any objections to this, it looks exactly like what's been approved in the past. Uh, in this very location or adjacent to this location on multiple occasions. Um, Nick, is that a fair statement?
I think it's a fair statement, yes, yep.
Consistent with the other ones, okay, so unless we've got, uh, uh, some other, uh, objection to that. Let's move on to the, the big parts, which are, uh, the, uh, reconfiguration of the upper story and the two railings, one of which is. Gonna be visible from Pinky Street and the other maybe a little bit. Uh, through the trees on a short stretch of, uh, Mount Vernon. Um, why don't we, uh, for lack of a better idea, take the reconfiguration of the, uh, upper story first? Uh, you have demonstrated, uh, which is very helpful, we appreciate the historical record here in the images and your forthrightness. Uh, in documenting that, which is, is very helpful for our discussion, uh, that we can be confident that it dates from nineteen forty-nine. Uh, and, uh, we believe at least it's largely unaltered from that state.
Correct.
Uh, there was a comment made, not that it, I, I don't know that it really matters, but. By the Civic Association that the windows are original, and I don't mean to speak for Rochelle, but I, I suspect what she may have been saying is at least the configuration of the windows. Is what was there in nineteen forty-nine, you know, whether they've been replaced with a replica since then, maybe we don't know, but do you know? Are these windows actually original to nineteen forty-nine?
Um. They're very, we, we pulled the original architectural plans and, um, we can't confirm that they're. Original, but they are very similar, and we can confirm that they are. Single pane uninsulated glass in the center. And the two doors on flanking the center window are. I believe, um, Anderson doors, they're not, they're not steel and glass doors. As are the windows on the canted sides, those are just off the rack. Anderson windows.
Right, okay, um, so then.
Were originally specified on. The nineteen forty-nine renovation, and the plans do call out, um. That. The contractor should use the least expensive version of. Materials that are allowable by code.
Right, and it's. It kind of shows, doesn't it, um, again, sorry to editorialize, but I suspect that might be behind part of your motivation for wanting to improve this.
Right. Okay, so, yeah, yeah, but I'm part of the. Part of the reason for this renovation is to. Construct this floor out of. Um. More efficient and better materials.
Right.
In addition to trying to make it look. More historic, if, if that is indeed what you would consider historic.
Uh, or at least in keeping with.
Yes, in keeping with, right, we're not trying to pretend that it was something that was there before. It's, um, we're trying to. Have a nod to the history and also trying to maintain. Generally the shape of what was built in nineteen forty-nine.
Right, um, yeah, so, so it's, uh, I would, I would characterize this as. Uh, a relatively modest modification, but not without. Uh. You know. Issues that we ought to debate, and so I think the question before us is. Particularly, again, understanding our jurisdiction is, is limited and our proof is narrow. It's what you can see from the public way, which is further away on Pinky or Mount Vernon Streets. Does the fact that this is a feature that we can confidently date to nineteen forty-nine matter? And I will, I will start the conversation, uh, by suggesting. Um, agree, Emily, as a principle, one thing we most want to avoid is a historical anachronism, something that looks like. Uh, it's historic but isn't, and, um, which is, I think, a concern that Rochelle and the Civic Association had raised.
Mm-hmm.
I do, at the same time, think that principle kind of works both ways. Um, there have been other examples, most notably being the Donahue Building at Suffolk University. Of. Architecture in the district that dates from the mid-century modern period, and moreover, and more importantly, is evidently indicative. Of that architectural style and influence, uh, the Donahue Building is that very large building on stuff, uh, uh, that. Used to belong to Suffolk University that had those ribbon windows that ran the entire length of the building, and there was an effort made, and this commission ultimately. Uh, agreed that that reference to that rare example of mid-century modern design ought be preserved. Um, but I think, again, the principle of avoiding the historical anachronism, to my mind, cuts both ways. Which is to say, if something is going to be deemed, uh, a rare example of something. That's sufficiently valuable to require its preservation. Um, it ought to, at a minimum, be clear. Uh, that the removal of, of, of that element, uh, would erase irrevocably from the district. The clear influence, uh, of that stylistic period, I'll give another example recently, which is forty-six Beacon Street. Which is the large, uh, townhouse building now under renovation. That had a later addition at the rear of the building, that was the sort of Bauhaus-style connector, which is a very unusual and very interesting feature. Uh, that evidenced very clearly the influence of that architectural style. Um, to the point where, and it's a substantial portion of a significant building, uh, we required its preservation. Uh, because to do, to, to have removed it, we felt, uh, would have diminished. The story of architectural, of the evolution of architectural history in the district generally. By removing one of the few examples of that style that one can tell just by looking at it. Is clearly evocative of that style, and moreover, was built in that period. After looking at this pretty carefully and seeing what you can see from the public way, I don't believe that condition is true here. I don't look at this and say, this is clearly mid-century modern, and it's an important contributing element. That evidences the mid-century modern style and its rare influence in architectural history in Beacon Hill. And that therefore the removal or the reconfiguration of it, uh, would diminish that history. Um, this just as easily could have been built in nineteen seventy-five, and if you asked me, just looking at it, that's what I would have guessed. I was surprised, and I had to look at your application a couple of times to. I was surprised and I had to look at your application a couple of times to convince myself that it was really nineteen forty nine. Um, I think the features are unremarkable in general. Uh, they're not a very high quality, which is the other standard that we work with is quality workmanship. Um, and, uh, you know, they're not, uh, a distinct. Uh, important contributing feature, in my opinion, to the architectural history of Beacon Hill. As rare as this might be, not, they're not analogous, in my opinion, to the Sunflower House. Uh, to that Bauhaus style connector at forty six Beacon, uh, or, uh, to the Donahue Building. For that reason. And the fact that. The alteration will be largely invisible from Mount Vernon Street. And only visible from a short stretch of Pinkney Street. I think the visual impact is pretty de minimis. So I think both in terms of architectural and historical appropriateness. Um. Uh, I'm okay with this, but again, I invite your spirited rebuttal or, uh, otherwise, uh, discussion colleagues.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I, I shouldn't be the first to jump in, but I.
Please, go ahead.
Um. The question of the, the roof, dormer, we'll call it. Is, is it, it's currently all glazed? I can't tell, it, it says remove existing steel windows. Uh, are they?
Yes.
That, and the elevation, i- it's all, it's all glass, correct? Except for the.
Play. The cent, the center is six panes of glass with steel dividers. And then we have a more typical. Framed door on either side.
That a wood framed door? Is that a wood framed door or a metal framed door?
Um. It's either wood or clad. It's not a steel door.
Uh, this chairman, I'm glad you clarified your thoughts about modernism. I was going one way, which is. That we should replicate the, that, those should not be wood windows. There should be metal windows. Uh, there, in the proposal, excuse me, go back to the move the elevation over. Uh, the, if you wanted to be honest to forty nine, where someone attempted. A modernist approach and a minimalism on the drawings, which was certainly. Part of, uh, part of the tenet of modern architecture, to be minimalist, minimalist. Of, uh, for very good reasons. Uh, I would, I would question whether the windows on the roof should be wood. Or should actually be redone in metal. Uh. Uh, otherwise, I don't have any objection to the front facade. It's just asked a question about the material of the windows. And the detailing of it, that perhaps it should be really like it is now, sort of forthrightly minimalist and modern. And replaced, uh, you know, with the divided windows, if you want, but in metal. But I, uh. Uh, uh, that, that's my comment about the front, as far as the back. The. Pieces of railings show up all over the place, don't they? And we had that, the, uh, discussion about. The, uh. The, the corner building on the, what is it, north side? And how many things were showing on the roof there? It's inevitable, we have the artifacts of contemporary society with chillers and compressors and. Roof hatches and people wanting to be on the roof. Doing their wonderful views. Uh, and, uh, of, of, of the roofscape and, and of the river. Uh. I don't see, uh. We can see the mock-up, but I don't have any objection, uh, to what's proposed on the, on the. What we call, what, what do you call it, the south side? Is that the south side? Yes, uh, the, uh. So, uh, my comment, my critical comment is about the dormer and how it's glazed. Which you, which you did discuss at some length, and I, I, I'm just carrying that forward a bit.
Okay, thank you, for sure, final. Um, let's for the moment just restrict ourselves to what we're calling the dormer, the upper, the, the top floor, that's the reconfiguration of that. We'll get to the roof deck railings in a moment, um. Anyone else have a thought? Um, yes, Commissioner Jackson, go ahead.
Um, I, I'm very comfortable with the, uh, rear facade. Um, as a, uh, an approach, if we go to the front facade. Um. Because I can't see what this looks like in perspective. Um. I wonder, can you keep the dormer and simply re-clad it? With the same kind of sensitivity that you did on the back facade? Get rid of the small windows and just call that. I, I'm not convinced by shrinking the dormer. Uh, but, uh, to replace the windows in the center with, uh, divided lights. Um, it feel, it looks to me comfortable in that, um. In form in that location. And I'm not certain what the, uh, uh, the more minimal dormer would look like. In three dimensions. So. To my mind, the discordant thing about the, uh, existing front facade are the tiny, the little windows. And the side element, I'd get rid of them and just give a surface treatment. Um, and put borrowed lights in the, uh, dominant, uh, glass facade area. I, I just don't know how to, uh, visualize, uh, the dormer to the.
Yeah, um, I know, we don't have a three D view, but. We could certainly present one if we need to come back, but you can sort of see it in plan here.
It seems, uh, it's, uh, uh, it seems, um, more. It feels as if on the, uh, the pros, the proposed is that you're struggling. And what's the right size of this thing? And how much sur- surface do we need on either side in order for it to be convincing as a dormer? It feels big, uh, so I take the, uh, existing King Kong version and say, uh, accept it. As something and refinish the, uh. From my point of view, but that's not the final word, obviously.
Well, Ralph, I appreciate that. I, I think from my perspective, the counter to that, not the counter, but the, just, uh, the. The different perspective from which I was coming. Uh. Related but different was that, um. I think. For the purposes of historical appropriateness. Uh, something that respects the fact that a large dormer-like thing was put on this thing. That is clearly part of the architectural history of this building in nineteen forty nine. And so I think there's a tension here between, how do you respect that? Uh, without, um, necessarily. Uh, overstating the case for the significance of the particular configuration that's there now, which I. My personal opinion is not, it's not historically significant, but the change in the overall plan of the building or the program of the building is. And so I think. We want, kind of want to preserve as much of that. General impulse, they put a big dormer-like thing on the top. Uh, you know, and, and maybe just, I think the intention here is just to try to respect that, but improve it. Without, uh, you know, pretending that it's. Some important, uh, advance in modernism kind of thing.
Um, I, I had enough, I had no notion about modernism, uh, in my statement. It's simply, it's a form, it seems comfortable. And, uh, the finessration seems, uh, uh, discordant with the rest of the building. Um, but it feels like it's a finessration problem, not a, uh, massing problem.
Okay, um, and, and in terms of, uh, uh, which is one other feature of this that I'd just like to point out, since. You know, Rochelle had articulated, uh. The guidelines that had motivated the Civic Association's comments here. Um. You know, I, I, I don't believe in, in, in my opinion, that, that it's, it's really, uh, guideline A seven that's. Implicated here, um. No changes will be made to existing window and door openings unless they involve restoration of original features, which they're supporting documentation of an original feature, I think. Um, I, I guess I would, uh.
This is an essay in cosmetic.
I mean, yes, yes, nicely, well, well said. I, I was delicately trying to, uh, not have to say that, but. How do we make this look better, right? And, um, if, 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 if we are, uh, if we have, and I don't mean to presume, but if, if we have satisfied ourselves. Uh, that there is not a need to, uh, sort of conserve what's there. Because of its architectural and historical significance, I don't believe, I should say, as a matter of principle, that we ought to kind of bind in amber. Uh, things that are old but unfortunate.
Well, uh, we can all color it, suit ourselves, but I'd look at the, uh, photograph of the dormer. It seems quite com- the existing dormer, massing wise, it seems quite. Comfortable, much better than the, the small dormer below it, which seems sort of, uh, uh, problematic and underscaled. Uh, but, uh, so if the problem isn't the scale of the dormer. And they've got it, uh, uh, but the problem is the finessration of the dorm. Um, isn't that a, uh, way of sort of approaching this and? Tackle what's really the problem and it's the finessration.
I agree.
Okay, um.
I also agree, I think that, I think the, the bigger dormer, like, I definitely agree with, uh, with Ralph. Um, just wanted to say that, I agree, Ralph.
Okay, thank you, Harry, and, um, so Ralph. Uh, let's be specific here, uh, because there's two aspects of the finessration here. There's the big part in the middle, and then there's these two little casement windows on the, on the. The trapezoid sides, and by the way, just to be very clear, since I don't know who all have seen this in person. And it's a little hard to see in this elevation, especially on a small screen. We do understand, Ralph, yes, that these, uh, that, that the. This thing is sort of trapezoid shaped, that the two casements are on a forty-five degree angle, let's say, from the front. So how would you propose to treat those?
Uh, as solid, uh, uh, solid wall.
Just remove them.
Remove the glass and.
Yeah.
Uh, it becomes the, the dominant expression of the mass of the dormer. And then the, uh, the forward facade becomes a transparency part. They get to keep the space that's inside.
I kind of think that's what they're trying to do.
Part of the reason that we wanted to remove the canted sides was because of what you're talking about here, which is how to clad them. Um. We were hoping that this dormer was really all trim material. And would cup, would come into this slate roof. When you have these canted sides and whether or not we're keeping the windows. It's sort of. We're not sure what they should be, because they wouldn't have been original, so the materials are sort of up for grabs.
Um, uh, what is the bay, uh, made of below?
That's a wood frame, yeah.
So you.
The Oriole, the.
Yes, you could still trim, you could trim this like it's a wood thing, but the side, those canted side are blind. Uh, so there is a language that you could use in this location that is comfortable with the way in which the bay below is formed. Uh, but the side panels would be opaque rather than glass.
I suppose we also were trying to avoid this sort of triangular section that. Reveals itself at the bottom and is hard to.
Uh, uh.
We would probably want to panel the sides.
Yes.
And then, and then there's this triangular panel at the bottom, which is a bit.
Apparently, the workmen in nineteen forty nine could solve that.
Right, but, yeah, yeah.
And so I think guys today could solve that issue and, um. Uh, in support of, uh. Uh, in support of Rochelle. Uh. Although I don't think this is a, the downfall of architecture. Um, this represents a historical moment. In the development of Louisburg Square, I consider it a positive moment. Rather than a negative one. Uh, yes, in nineteen forty nine, they used a, uh, a bay form of this kind. Um, I don't think that's necessarily to be done away with for, uh, the twenty twenty-five. Uh, bay that I have no idea what it's going to look like in the three D. But this seems comfortable and of a, of its period.
Why wouldn't you support, uh, metal windows though, Ralph?
I, uh, I'm not going into the, the metal, um, I don't. I, I look at the, uh, borrowed light system on the top floor and wonder. That seems out of scale in relation to, uh, the rest of the building. Uh, so, um, I'm more concerned about that. In the, uh, proposed edition than I am about what material they're made of.
Well, Ralph, to the, to the point, by the way, I don't know that one is going to be able to detect. Uh. The difference between a wood window and a metal window at this, at the remove that is required for our jurisdiction.
Oh, sure, I disagree with you.
Well, I have some examples of, of, uh. Oh, have you gone and looked at it, Mo?
Sure.
Have you looked at it in person?
Did I look at this?
Yeah.
No.
Because I, I think it is kind of quite hard to see it particularly from Mount Vernon Street.
I will see it tomorrow morning, though.
Okay.
After you get back, nevermind.
Uh, so, Ralph, um. With respect to the middle part of the window, since that's what we're talking about at the moment.
Yes.
Uh. Forgive me if I missed it, but, uh. Do you, do you not object to the way they've treated it? Again, apart from the sides, the part in the middle.
No, um, well, I personally would have made the lights smaller. But I, I appreciate the spirit in which they're tackling this problem.
Yeah.
And, uh, a borrowed light system in that top level is. To my mind, the appropriate expression. Uh, we can disagree about scale. I, uh, my reason for wanting to start at the back was because I was certain about. Uh, my belief in what they were doing and they.
You're fine. You're fine with the back.
Yeah, you bring those values around to the front side, I'm comfortable with the direction that they're heading. Um, I just think that the bay form. Um, yeah, I mean, how can you object to the, uh, proposed rear elevation? Um. So I come around to the front side and it's a, uh. Again, about greater transparency, I just feel as if the dormer that's there, um, seems to have integrity.
Okay, but I guess I'm just not following what the. Um, I mean, the, the, the. It's the, the portion of it in the middle doesn't seem to change in, in size. It, the, the fenestration is different. Uh, but you're okay with the, with what they're proposing for the fenestration in the middle?
Yeah, that's fine.
Maybe, maybe you're saying if it were you, you might make the pane smaller because they're.
It's not the.
Yeah, no, but I appreciate that, yours, because what you're, what you're referring to, just to be clear, is just looking at the proposed, the entire facade in, in its broader context. They're bigger than the ones below.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark, we've been talking about this for just about an hour now, so I think we should be wrapping up these comments.
Yeah, okay, so, so, um, I don't know, I'm okay with. With, 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 with it, what's proposed, but it sounds like there are some reservations about this. Um, so why don't we, uh, concern ourselves? We might have to deny this, uh, without prejudice, Emily, and, and ask you to take another bite at it, this portion specifically. Um. Uh, if we do that, it will not render this version, uh, uh, off the table. It will simply mean we want to see something else and we'll, we'll give you some guidance if we go in that route. But let's then concern ourselves with, uh, the proposed railing. Um, I, did I hear Ralph, uh, it, it, I don't mean to speak for you, but tell me just to confirm. In your view of the rear, uh, did you include, and forgive me, maybe it was Mo, you're okay with the railing on the rear?
Um, I, uh. Oh.
Maybe it was Mo, sorry.
Must have been Mo.
Okay, uh, this, this one, you can see it is really only visible from a short stretch of Mount Vernon through the tree. through the trees. You can't see it from here, but there are railings both to the left and to the right of this that you can see from the same stretch of street if you walk down another ten feet or something. They are both larger and more visible than what you see here. And again, given I won't rehash the whole foregoing discussion from the other property, but for those reasons, I think I'm, I'm comfortable allowing this one on the back. Does anyone feel differently with respect to the roof deck railing on the back? Okay, let's then talk about the front. This again is only visible, I believe, from looking at it in person. And it's just the corner that I guess Emily is circling right now. That's they've nicely mocked up and it's from this stretch of, I don't know, call it fifteen feet of Pinkney Street at the northern end of, or western end, whatever that is, of the square. Like you can see there, it is one of the criteria, Emily and company, that we, we often invoke when thinking about and adjudicating roof deck railings is, is it visible against the open sky versus just other structure and so forth? And of course, if you have other structure, particularly like a brick wall or even mechanicals or something behind it, obviously tends to diminish the visual impact and sometimes make it virtually go away. That's not really the case here. But again, I would just suggest for our consideration, you can see the very end of it, but two doors down at fifteen, the one that has the Copperhead House in the upper left-hand portion of this photo, there is a roof deck railing that runs the entire length width of the building. And its neighbor seventeen similarly has a railing that runs the entire length. So those railings, there we are, thank you very much, Emily, are at least as visible as this one. They're entirely set against the open sky. They're closer to the public way and they're larger. This one, by contrast, is shorter, further away. And at least it's not, it's against the open sky, but it's got the chimney and the chimney pots and stuff behind it. So I think the visual impact of this, in my opinion, is no worse at least than, than the next door neighbors. Now, Mo, was that you? Who would, forgive me, again, I'm having a senior moment and couldn't remember, but a, a few minutes ago, you were opining about railings?
Beats me, my senior moments too, sir.
Let me just ask you directly, how do you feel about this, given what you can see in the mock-up and given the, the broader context of the buildings next door? If you turn around in this spot too, there's also a building on Pinkney Street right behind you. If you're looking from that view, it has a visible railing. It's bigger and even closer than this one.
Can you go out onto that? Is this, is this a French balcony or what?
They're taking the railing away in the front.
The railing we're talking about that would be visible from Pinkney is this right here. This, this is around the roof hatch. It's about six feet back from the front facade, I believe.
But you won't see anything from the front elevation.
You might see there's the top rail.
Well, that's outside of our jurisdiction anyway, so it doesn't matter for our purposes. Let me just ask you, Emily, the obvious question, which I'm sure you were anticipating. Given this is a significant renovation, regardless of how it winds up looking and from the front, I understand you're, you're doing a lot of work to the building. Can we move it so that we make it less visible, either the hatch or the railing or both?
We can certainly go back and look at other options. This is the one that works best for the client's layout and also doesn't cause excess
Yeah, sure.
For the roof, the existing roof and roof deck, we have a skylight above the stair that we have to avoid. And so we're really limited on where it can be. We can potentially look into roof hatches that have railings that are movable somehow so that it stays down. We can, I don't really want to recommend anything formally right now. We'd like to go back to the drawing board and talk with the clients and see what's possible.
Hey, mention something?
Please, Bob, go ahead.
Hi, hi, I'm Bob Palladino. We had, just so you know, the, the, I mean, we've played with this plan and the hatch is in, is in a very good place. We dropped the hatch by over three feet. At one point, the hatch was at level, level with the deck. And we've actually worked very hard to drop this hatch to reduce the impact of the railing so that when you emerge from the hatch, you ascend up to the deck that we've planned. And that's just, just wanted to let you know that we've made a significant effort to minimize the impact of this railing.
Excuse me, are there, Mr. Palladino, are there, no roof hatches which have integral rails with them, which, which lift? So when you, when you close the hatch, the rails disappear? They're only exposed when you open?
There are. Our concern was this is a very low profile hatch that we chose so that it could sit lower. And we would just need to look at if this, if these new hatch, if the hatch that has the railing that isn't exposed all the time is, is not as low profile, then the hatch itself would become visible.
Okay.
But we can, we can certainly look.
This was, this was a design review procedure, I think, as Mr., as Nick has pointed out. I think we, we've given them enough advance. And I think we've given them enough feedback.
Can I just ask one, one clarification that would help us move forward to the next one? And maybe get something that everyone's happy with. Is the direction for the front dormer to just keep the shape of the dormer, but bring the details more in keeping with with Beacon Hill? Or is it to try to respect the nineteen forty-nine mid-century design? Because it, it sort of seems to be a little bit of both now, which sort of leaves us a little bit confused.
Right, appreciate that. Okay, Ralph likes the shape. Mo, what do you think of the shape?
I, I, I don't, I do, I, I don't. I think they're, well, they're suggesting to remove the splayed walls and have them angular and infill it with solid material is, is okay. But I also think keeping the splayed walls and filling them in with solid materials is also okay. So I think it's, you know, quest al cola, you know, it's this or that, and I I think it all part of comebacking, so I.
Okay, does anyone else want to, is, is anyone else emphatic in keeping the shape? I'm not.
I'm emphatic in keeping the shape, but I believe the, the representative is right about changing the glazing pattern in the center section to be more in sympathy with the building below and the fenestration approach on the back elevation.
Okay, anyone else want to keep the shape?
Yes.
Yes, I thought I heard you, Arian. I, I wanted to make sure because I thought I heard you and then I wasn't sure. Okay. In order to move forward, I think Emily and, and Police Commissioners, just jump in if I mischaracterize this. I think where we're coming to is we're okay with the back. We're okay with the railing at the back. We want to preserve the shape. We're okay with the direction of the fenestration in the middle of the front. And it's just a matter of how do you improve this while preserving the shape? If I characterize that fairly?
Yes.
Okay, and then with respect to the roof deck railing visible from the front, since we're going to have to come back anyway for the dormer, maybe we ask, are there alternatives to, it sounds like you've already done a lot of homework, which we very much appreciate, Bob and Emily both, to try to figure it, figure it out and make it less visible. But while you're at it, maybe take one more bite at the apple there to see if we can reduce the visibility of this. But let me just ask the commission to confirm one more time, because I, I don't think where I come out on the roof deck railing is given the context of other railings in the immediate vicinity that are, again, more visible and more prominent and larger, that, that I'm not particularly troubled by this. I think it'd be okay with it. But does anyone feel differently? Does anyone want to, is anyone uncomfortable with the front roof deck railing? Let me ask it in the positive. Is everyone comfortable with what they are proposing?
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay, Arian? Oh, you're, you're cutting out there, Arian. I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Yes, you're okay with what they're proposing for the front?
Yes, yes. You caught, you caught me in the middle, allergy little thing.
Sorry. Forgive me. Okay, Sandy, did you want to weigh in on any of this if you're still here?
Yeah, no, I am here. I am here. I'm just interested in the two architects talking. Anyhow, I'm, I'm perfectly all right. Yes.
Okay, so I think what that leaves us is, and again, I think we, we've, I, I heard a tacit agreement on the EV port, so we can approve that. I think what we're left with is just coming back for just the dormer in the front and specifically with respect to an alternative design that preserves the shape, but is in the direction of the fenestration as is, is already proposed. Okay?
Thank you very much.
We got to make a motion here. So I will move that we, that the application be approved with respect to the EV charger port, the rear facade of the fifth floor rear facade, the fifth floor roof deck railing, the front facade roof deck railing, and denied without prejudice with respect to, oh, anyone, anyone have an issue with the storm windows? Let me say, and with respect to the storm windows and denied without prejudice with respect to the front facade dormer. And the applicant is asked to return with a revised proposal reflecting retaining of the shape of the dormer and the general direction of the fenestration as proposed. Emily, is that enough to go on?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that will give you an approval for part of this, and I don't know if that'll help, but you can proceed the back part, for example, if you want to. I realize you want to run it through zone just in case, but if you want to, you can start working on that. It's just the, the front part. We, we want to see one more revision on this.
No, this is very helpful to allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your, for your patience and your
Thanks, everyone.
Attention to this. Before we do that, we got to vote. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Emily, Bob, Tracy.
Thanks so much, everyone. Thank you.
You get a letter from Nick with the details.
Wonderful. Thanks a lot.
Okay, so that concludes the design revision. Now we have administrative approvals, I think. Must have missed something.
Yeah, let me just get to that screen.
Well, Nick is doing that. Any, anyone need to recuse themselves from anything on the, on the, or have any comments, questions, concerns, objections to any of the items shown in administrative approvals?
Not, not me.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the administrative items en masse?
Well, moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, hold on, we got to take, I, I almost did it, Arian. Before we do that, does anyone want to be heard on the record in public comment with respect to any or all of the administrative? I got halfway this time, Arian, halfway there. Okay, I don't think we, we have anyone. No, Holland, no? Okay. So well, the, it's been moved in second to approve the administrative approvals en masse. We'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Okay, administrative review items are approved. Staff updates, Nick?
Yeah, let me, just a couple of quick updates, nothing urgent. So just a reminder that Hillfest is coming up on September twenty-eighth. It's on the weekend. We'll have a table out there. Please stop by and say hi. It's a great way to connect with the community. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up to everybody is that if we wanted to, in terms of violations, I just wanted to share my screen very quickly. If you want to report a violation or review a violation, so if you have a property that you're selling and/or you're buying and you want to make sure that there are there are no violations that are outstanding on your property, just go to boston.gov/landmarks and then you go to the landmarks portal and click Report Review violations. You can report a violation. You can do it anonymously. You do not have to provide your information. If you want to review any outstanding violations, you just go here and you can search by address. You can see all of the outstanding violations that are on file. And those will come directly to me. I'll get notified if anything is filed. And it's a great way of kind of keeping in touch with all of these things, so you can certainly always send me an email, but I have to enter this manually if you do not. So I would encourage you to do this and this way we can kind of keep track of anything that's going on and making sure that we get those taken care of in a timely fashion. Secondly, let me just go back to my presentation. Actually, sorry, that was it for, for my staff updates. So, Mark, I think the only thing left is just the, the statements we were going to make.
Yes.
And if you don't mind, I'm just going to put on mute for just one second and I just have to do a quick thing. It should take less than twenty seconds, so I'm just going to mute myself and take care of something very quickly related to this statement. I just had to bring the statement up, so give me ten seconds. Now, folks, so I will go ahead and this is a, I'm actually going to stop sharing my screen. All right, Mark, so I'm just going to go ahead and read a prepared statement in regards to the outstanding lawsuit by the folks at forty-six Beacon Street. So that statement is as follows. So this is a public statement on forty-six Beacon Street in the settlement. So the statement is as follows, a settlement agreement has been reached regarding the appeal of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission's decision made at its December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three public hearing to deny application two four point oh five four four BH for a proposed garage door entry at the rear of forty-six Beacon Street facing Spruce Court. In accordance with the judgment entered in connection with that matter, a certificate of appropriateness has been issued to the applicant to approve the proposed garage entry door with the following specifications. The door shall be constructed of solid wood and shall incorporate a wishbone patterned design consistent with the rendering provided to the, from the applicant. The finish shall be a black semi-gloss paint. The configuration shall consist of two vertically oriented swing-in doors. No hardware shall be visible from any location within the purview of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, including but not limited to keypads, cameras, key fob access devices, intercoms, or LED light sensors. A simple stone header matching the color and style of the other headers seen on the rear elevation shall be constructed over the aforementioned doors. And shop drawings for all proposed changes are to be submitted to staff for the record for final approval. The applicant is required to inform the commission of any project changes and any additional future work at this property is subject to the prior review and approval of the Beacon Hill And approval of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. That is the end of the statement. The certificate of appropriateness for this element has been issued. And we do not have any other additional information at this time.
You show the drawing of the, you referenced.
We don't have that available at this time. If you circle back with me, I'm happy to share it with you.
Okay, thank you, Nick. So that, I hope commissioners was that you, you got a copy of that earlier today. Let me just say, for what it's worth for my part, I'm sorry that you were hearing about this. So late in the game, just before the hearing, so I particularly am sorry if you did not had a chance. To see that email in advance of the hearing and are, are hearing about this for the first time. We're not gonna take public comment on this and I, I don't think it would be prudent to discuss it. At any length here, but I am gonna use my prerogative as the chair of this commission to just try to. Explain this a little better since it's, I realize that the statement is quite general. The upshot is this, is this. The city has decided to settle the case and the upshot of that is they have. Given the certificate of appropriateness to the proponent of forty-six Beacon to build the garage door. That they had originally applied for. The slightly broader context, again, without getting too much into the weeds. And again, without opining on this for the moment, is that, you know. Just stepping back for a second, in case it's not clear to anyone how this works. Because we are a creation of the Commonwealth and not the city. The. We don't hear appeals directly, like when you appeal a parking ticket, you just go back to the transportation department or if you want to appeal a zoning decision, you go back to the building department. Instead, the enabling legislation provides that the Superior Court of the Commonwealth has appellate jurisdiction, meaning if you want to appeal. One of our decisions, you have to take it to court. That's just the standard practice. And as part of that process. Both sides submit their legal briefs and make their arguments. We made an argument that no, the decision was proper and they made an argument that no, it wasn't. And in this case, as is common again in litigation, that's what this is ultimately. The other side took depositions of each of the commissioners, that you all know because you were there. And the plaintiffs then filed a motion for summary judgment, which just basically means they're saying to the judge. We think we have enough evidence to make our case and you should just decide the case in our favor right now and give us the certificate. That's what they asked for. The judge, in response and ruling on the motion for summary judgment, said, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna grant your summary judgment, just give you the certificate. Because the commission may yet be able to prove and demonstrate that. Our decision was appropriate. The, the issue hinged, as I think you all know, but I hope. You, you know, was that the proponent argued and the court to an extent agreed. That some commissioners may have taken factors into consideration and making the decision that were outside of our narrow purview. Things like traffic impacts and parking impacts and safety impacts and things like that. The court found that there was sufficient evidence to think that may have happened. And they didn't say that, the, the judge didn't say he believed that the commissioners did. Unambiguously. And the court also said that they thought we might yet prove that nevertheless. Despite some commissioners taking into. Into account factors outside of our jurisdiction, that the case was decided correctly. And that moreover, that we might have reached the same result regardless. You know, even, even though some commissioners may have taken these things into account. And so what the judge did was say, okay. You haven't proved the case enough to. Allow me to, to just decide it for you and give them the certificate, but there's enough evidence to think that this was a problem. And so they offered us three alternatives that we had to pick. The first was we could do a do-over. Basically, they would remand the case back to us with some pretty strict instructions to say, okay, you're gonna get a do-over. You need to just rehear the case, but you need to stick to the narrow purview of the commission. Then we'll find out if you would have decided it differently. Importantly, as part of that option, they said the city would have to pay the plaintiff's attorney's fees incurred up to this point. This is all in the decision. If you don't have a copy, we'll get you. The second option was we could just take it to trial. And then see where the chips, let the chips fall where they may and let each side try to make their case and the judge would decide. The judge made a point to say, if we do that, I'm gonna reserve the right to just. You know, if I, if I find for the plaintiff, I'm gonna reserve the right to just give them a certificate. So that was a real possibility if we went to trial, that they would just get what they asked for anyway. And then third, the third option was we could settle the case by mutual agreement without either side having to pay any costs or fees. And I would just say, for what it's worth, over my emphatic objections, the city chose the third option. They chose to settle the case. Extensively, I think you can do the, read between the lines here to avoid the risk of going to trial. Or the costs of a do-over, having to pay the attorney's fees. And the really, I suspect, was probably no way to settle this other than to give the applicant. What they asked for, and that is what has happened. I, I, I want to say for the record, this is unfortunate. It's not a result I think that any of us wanted. But I want to commend my colleagues, commissioners. You did the honorable thing and you told the truth in the depositions and that's a really good thing. And I think we're just gonna have to consider the results of this case going forward and just be especially careful. In what matters we take into consideration. We're, we're, this is not the end of this conversation because. I, I'm hoping that the city will take steps to help us all do a better job at that. And that's what I think we'll need to do going forward. But at the moment, that is the result. The, the city has settled the case and they're gonna grant or they have granted their certificate of appropriateness.
Well, thank you for standing up for us. I appreciate that.
I did get the chance to read it beforehand, but it's, they did make a major change. The doors swing in and not up.
I would, I would advise not commenting on this at this point. This is a simple statement to keep you informed of the decision. I think it's best. That we leave it at this. Is my recommendation to do that and wrap up this meeting.
Yeah, I think there's, again, I, we, we don't have an application before us right now. This, the certificate is, if it's not formally been issued, it's effectively been issued, so we don't really have it. The wherewithal legally to, to, to further debate it or adjudicate it. It's not been noticed and so forth. Unfortunately, as Nick said, and I, I wish it wasn't the case, but I think we kind of have to leave it at that. I would encourage you, if you've not read the court decision, to read it. If you have questions about it. I, I don't mean to speak for them, but I'm sure the law department would be happy to entertain them. And just if there's things that are confusing or it's, it's, it's not clear what they, what the judge means. For what it's worth, if you haven't read it. It's about as specific as what I just outlined, which is why I felt comfortable outlining it for you. I'm not speaking for the court, of course. I'm not saying anything that's not in there. But it, you know, there's a bit of legalese and so forth. But that's the bottom line is they thought, okay, the, the court held. You know, it's not, it's clear that something, that there was evidence that gave the court concern. But not so much so that they thought, I'll just decide it. And so here we are. So again, if you don't have the decision, we'll send it to you.
I, I, I've just been provided information to say that we can. Tom, our attorney, will be following up with a memo shortly. And we will provide it to each commissioner, so including the alternate commissioners. So we will provide that as soon as that is available to us and we can take additional questions offline.
Yes, and thank you all for your patience and forbearance in this. Thank you, Kathy and Liz for being here. Kathy, our. Director and their deputy Elizabeth for tuning in at this late hour and for Chrisa from Historic New England is also here. Thanks for your patience if you're still here. And Holland from the Civic Association. We really appreciate it. And so anyway, that's where we are. Again, there's the open meeting law too, so that's another reason. We don't mean to sound bureaucratic about this, but. That we can't really discuss this outside of an actual application that we're adjudicating in the context of a meeting. So please do follow up with Nick and or the law department. You'll get the memo from Tom hopefully tomorrow. If you have questions, I really encourage you to follow up directly with him.
Thank you.
Sorry to end on a, on a, 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 a down note, but if there's no further business, then I know it's getting late. I want to thank you, Joe Cornish. Forgive me. You're right there in the center of my screen. I did not mean to exclude you, our fearless director of design review. Thank you, Joe, for being here and for sticking it out all the way to the end. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion to adjourn.
A second. Okay, all in favor? Thank you all. We'll see you next month. Take care.